All right, well, welcome to the Atascadero City Council. We've had a few technical challenges here and there, so we thank you for bearing with us for a few extra minutes as we get going. The council has just returned from a closed session, so I will ask our city attorney if there are any reportable actions.
There was no reportable.
Thank you. And so now I will call our regular session of the city council to order, and council member Funk will please lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Please join me in pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rich public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice, but I don't know, whatever, Funk. I like that. Roll call, please.
Council member Fonzie?
Here.
Council member Funk?
Here.
Council member Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Protan Borbeau?
Here.
Mayor Moreno?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you are watching or listening to the city council meeting tonight, we welcome you. If you would like to speak during the set aside time for community forum or during public comment for one of the items that is on our agenda, please note the following number, and we will make sure to repeat it throughout. But go ahead and write it down, 805-538-2888. Again, 805-538-2888, and this will allow you to provide public comment via phone. I will give you a bit of a heads up. Sometimes if you're watching on slow span versus what's going on live, there can be a little bit of a delay. So I would recommend if you think you're going to be speaking on an item, go ahead and get queued up in line and make that phone call, just in case there's any delay. We would not want you to miss out on the ability to address council on whatever issue that might be on your mind. When you please call, let us know what item it is that you want to speak on. Once again, the phone number is 805-538-2888. I will move on to agenda. We will waive in reading in full all ordinances appearing on this agenda, and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move?
Second. We have a motion by council member Funk, a second by council member Newsom. Roll call, please.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Newsom?
Yes.
Council member Fonzie?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Borbeau?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Five oh, motion passes.
Thank you. We're onto the consent calendar, and all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and can be approved in one motion if there's no member of the council or the public who wishes to comment or ask questions. So I will ask, is there any member of the council wishing to pull an item or comment?
No.
Seeing none, I will ask, do we have anyone from the public who wants to pull an item or have a conversation about anything on the consent calendar? Luke, are you there? Um, Luke, Luke, Luke.
Hello, this is David. Let's go ahead and move.
No comment on consent.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, shoot, now I lost my place trying to look for you. Okay. So now that we've gone through that, do we, any council member who would like to make a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Fonzie, a second by council member Funk. Roll call, please.
Council member Fonzie?
Yes.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Borbeau?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Five oh, motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to updates from the city manager. Ms. Ricker, change hats now.
Thank you, mayor and council members. And I'm trying to figure out how to show my screen. There we go. Okay, did that come up for you guys?
Oh, we kind of have to see your inbox.
Okay, well, that's a bad thing.
That was, yeah. The city council member talking about potential issues. There we go.
Those were, that's the city clerk one, so, oh, boy. It is not going very well. We'll go ahead and see this very interesting view. So at least Luke can help me out, because it's on the other screen here, and I can't get it to show that screen. I do apologize. So the first item I want to talk to you about tonight is the Caltrans-Mora Road Storm Drain Improvement Project. I'm sure you have seen a lot of the construction along Highway 41. They are beginning a project which includes undergrounding all of the storm drain channels, so those big, deep ditches on either side of the road will be filled in with new culverts, and they are installing the new pipe while also replacing non-compliant driveway approaches along Mora Road. They will be doing sidewalks and other improvements as they go. Caltrans expects that the project will take about six to eight months to complete and should be all wrapped up toward the end of the year. There will be intermittent lane closures and other inconveniences for the public during this time, but we will have a much more walkable, friendly Highway 41 corridor, so we appreciate The next one is the City of Atascadero 2020 pavement resurfacing project. That has also begun. This week, we're repaving sections of San Anselmo and Ardea Road. When completed, both of these roads will have been completely repaved between El Camino and Portola. Pavement resurfacing on segments of Portola, Curbill, Monterey, and Garcia Roads are all starting in May, and those are roadway segments that are heavily used by motorists, so there will be some inconvenience, but you will still be able to get through. We will be utilizing light pavement rehabilitation and resurfacing methods to extend the life of the existing roadway in a cost-effective manner, and we will try and get out information so people can know what kind of delays to expect in that area and detours. The San Anselmo Road pavement reconstruction project at Highway 101 is nearly complete. The final striping will be done within two weeks after the pavement is allowed to cure. The contractor did a great work and had a good handle on traffic control, which was extremely important with the In-N-Out, the gas stations, the Kmart Center, a lot of different driveways and activity going on there. So if we're looking for a silver lining right now, the significant decrease in traffic volumes while we've all been staying safe at home has been a real benefit for the ease of these road construction. The Zoo Garden Event Center update. So this project will be an event venue for the zoo and will be available for private events reserved through the city when we're able to do that again in the future. The open-walled roof structure will be a very nice addition to the lake park. The earthwork, utilities, and slab have been completed, and the framing is started. The project is expected to be completed by midsummer, and I encourage all of you to take a walk by sometime to check it out. It's shaping up to be a beautiful space and a nice new amenity for the zoo. And last but not least, we are going to talk about COVID later in the agenda, but I just want to do a few reminders. Please continue to support our local businesses so they will remain a viable part of our community, and we'll still be there when we are all able to return to more normal situation. Many businesses are selling gift cards, providing online shopping, delivery, or curbside pickup services. You could adopt a business, adopt a grad by purchasing a gift card from your favorite local vendor and giving it to your favorite local 2020 grad. In addition, at the city website and our social media outlets, we're also now utilizing cable TV Channel 20, which is the city government access channel, to help get information out to our residents. Atascadero residents who are Spectrum TV subscribers already have Channel 20 on their basic lineup. And finally, even with the really gorgeous weather we're having now and everyone wanting to get outdoors to enjoy it, we still need to remain vigilant and to keep practicing all of the social distancing and other safety members' measures. So please, continue your social distancing. Just because we have nice weather, that doesn't mean that we can stop. And please, 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 support our local businesses. We enjoy having them here in town and want to make sure that they know it, and they're still here at the end. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
We can't hear you.
I tried to mute so that I wouldn't, you know, make noises and, you know, sneeze or something. Not that I'm sick, right? You don't want to sneeze or cough nowadays, because that's a bad thing. So I'm seeing no questions, so thank you very much for that report. I think all of us would agree here and in our community that we want to support our businesses and doing that to the extent that we can, so we'll keep that up. Thank you. We are now on to community forum. This is the portion of our meeting that's reserved for persons that want to address council on any matter that is not on this agenda but over which we have jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and asked that you would state your name for the record before making your presentation. Community forum in total will be limited to 30 minutes, and any members of the public who have questions or they need information outside of this process can contact the city clerk via email, cityclerk@atascadero.org, or 805-470-3400 from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And with that, Luke, who do we have for public comment?
Up first, we have Jeff Osland.
Good evening, council. Thank you.
Good evening.
A few things. For starters, I would like to thank the majority of our council for doing a welfare check at Glenn's Repair, making sure we're good, Roberta for referring people to the shop. So I thank you very much in supporting the small businesses of our community. For this evening, I have reached out to Susan Funk, councilwoman Funk, and I am going to bring up last week's item that was at the end of the council meeting, which I believe was somewhat inappropriate and possibly borderline illegal, which was asking about a local business in our community and if they were essential. I understand things can be about whether businesses are essential or not, but to single out a certain business in town without having it on the agenda, I don't think is correct and right, so I'm just throwing that out there in public comment. Outside of that, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Luke, do we have any other comments, any other speakers wishing to address the council?
Yes, we have Tricia Stanley.
Welcome, Ms. Stanley.
Hello, this is Tr- hi, this is Tricia Stanley, and I greet you, council members and mayor. I do have something to say about the COVID-19. I said some things to you last week, not last week, two weeks ago, about that, but even before that, I want to say something-
Okay, so I do, Ms. Stanley, I do want to let you know we have this later on our agenda under item D1. It's unusual that we do that, so I will go ahead and let you finish the three minutes, but just, we are having it later in the agenda, so if you are going to be around for the meeting and listening to everything, I'd prefer that you have it then, but if you're not, I'll go ahead and allow it now.
Okay, because David didn't think that it was on the agenda per se.
Yeah, there's a discussion item D1, and I will be allowing, or I will not allowing, I will be having public comment during that discussion item. So will you be available then?
Um, if need be.
All right, you know what, let's, Luke, go ahead and restart the timer, and let's just go ahead and do it now. All right, Ms. Stanley, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Last time, and also this time, I did not hear a prayer at the opening of the council meeting. I heard the flag salute, but I did not hear the prayer that normally is there, and I think that's a very important thing, that we need God's wisdom. You as the council and we as members of the public need God's wisdom in the decisions we make, so I'd like to very much urge that next time around, you have, usually have a pastor from the community who does a prayer at the beginning of the council. And then going to COVID-19, I'd like to ask that there be no mandate regarding masks. I need to be able to see, and I need to be able to breathe, and with a mask, that's going to be very hard, difficult for me. Now, last time, two weeks ago, I talked about Wade Horton and the order that he put out countywide for stay at, stay at home. And I am asking and highly suggesting that the city council write to Wade Horton and to Penny Bornstein, the county health officer, a letter regarding withdrawing the shelter-at-home order as soon as possible. See, this is, this is, to me, was unneeded restriction for our locale, and also it's caused a lot of undue trauma to thousands of people in our county with jobs lost and stores having to shorten their hours or, in many cases, be shut during this whole time. So I can understand shelter at home if a person is sick, if a person is maybe 80-plus, you know, if they have poor health, they have some sort of medical condition, that would be wise for them to stay at home at this time. But the rest of us, we have to be able to go about our work and our daily routine. Also, I think anytime we have something like this again, that church should be considered an essential activity, and I don't mean meeting in the parking lot in your car. There's no reason, as far as I can see, under this kind of situation that we have now, why we couldn't be in the pews or in the seats inside our church using the social distancing thing, you know, if we needed to have two or three.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Stanley. You got your, your three minutes is up if you, if you want to finish a sentence, but we got it.
It goes fast. Yeah, okay, well, see you next time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Luke, do we have any other callers wishing to speak on this item?
We have no more callers.
Okay. And I will ask, Rochelle, are there any comments that were received by email to be read into the record?
Not under public comment.
Okay. And I will just give it one more try in case a phone call came in late. Is there any, anyone else, Luke, wishing to speak to community forum from the phone?
No, there is not.
No, all right, thank you very much. I will close public comment and bring that back to council. And just with regards to what Ms. Stanley asked about with prayer, just to let the public know, anyone is welcome to come and do a prayer, a blessing, anything like that during community forum. We did have pastors that tended to rotate, actually for most of my time on council, but probably, I don't know, maybe it's been a year or two since we've seen them do that, so I don't know, I don't know what shifted, but anyone is more than welcome to come and do that. And we will be talking about the COVID later this evening, so we will save our comments at that time. All right, thank you very much. We are on to our public hearings. Item B1 is a request for authorization to process a general plan amendment for the Beryl Creek project. And Roberta, do we have, yes, I will turn this over to you for a second. I believe you need to recuse.
I do need to recuse myself. According to the city attorney, I am an employee of Century 21 Hometown, and Century 21 Hometown has listed the property that you will be reviewing this evening. So I'm going to turn off my video cam and my microphone, and we'll be making no comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Pirik, is there anything that you wanted to add to that, or is that sufficient?
No, council member Fonzie covered it properly.
Thank you. All right, well, we will say goodbye to council member Fonzie, and we will turn this over to our community development director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. Good evening. So what we're going to be talking about really tonight is an authorization, not really talking about the project in great detail, but talking about the idea of whether the city should proceed with processing this project, which is a general plan amendment, and we consider this a major general plan amendment as it's much over one-half acre in size and is actually about 16 acres in size, and is a significant contribution to the city. I'm hoping you can see the presentation on your screen at this point. Just let me know if you can.
It's blocked out by GoToWebinar.
Let's try. Minimize that, maybe. Probably have the wrong screen on there.
Phil, this is Luke. You can share your other screen.
Yes, where's that function?
Bring up the GoToWebinar toolbar.
Yeah, I've got that.
Be an option to share. Right below your, the big show button, there'll be a little screen dropdown. You can change which screen you're sharing, or you can move your presentation to the screen we see right now.
Okay, let's just try that. I'm not able to get that to move, so I'm going to move that over, and we'll do that Bear with me just a moment. All right, let's get this started. Apologize for that. Are we able to see a full screen version of that?
No.
No?
Think you need to go to slideshow and start slideshow?
Yeah, I have, and then the slideshow started on my other screen. Oh, let's just try this again. Let's just keep going here. Hold on.
We can see it just fine if you, if you want. It doesn't hurt to see this format.
Let's try and go through it that way, then. I'm not able to switch the other screen. I'm using my small surface here. All right, let's go ahead and go through. We can see the other slide. That'll be all right. Anyway, let's get into just the project location. It's at the Del Rio, El Camino Real and Highway 101 intersection. We call this a commercial node. It's one of our northernmost commercial nodes. Right now, the designation for this area is known as rural estates on our general plan, and on our zoning regulations, we call it residential suburban. Several components will need to go into an application to see development on its property, primarily amending the general plan. It's an act we can do about twice a year. State law regulates that pretty closely. We would also need to adjust what's called our urban services line, and that's the boundary in which we serve properties with wastewater services, sewer services. That's really the only issue there, not a significant issue, but just something to note. And then we would need to adopt this either into the Del Rio specific plan or create its own specific plan, and the reason for that is, any project that includes more than 100 houses that includes a general plan amendment is required by our policies to be a specific plan or to be part of a specific plan. Also, they do want to have ownership here on some of the commercial and residential properties, so they would need to apply for a subdivision map. And then finally, anytime we do an action of this significance, there is an environmental review process. We don't know the level of that environmental review yet, and we're, obviously, our goal is to make that as easy as possible, but also comply with state law and make that as thorough as possible. Right now, the site's pretty much vacant. There's a small quantet hut along Del Rio Road that serves as sort of the food bank distribution center, but this is one of our most significant sort of highway-fronting parcels. It's sandwiched between the freeway and one of our west-side residential zones. Of course, the Apple Valley Residential Neighborhood is just to the south across Del Rio. Generally, this area, though, it's west-side, it's surrounded by somewhat of a rural environment. You know, I was fortunate enough the other day to take a tour of the hotel just before it being finalized over there, the new Hilton Home Suites, and this picture actually was taken from the top floor, looking out to the west, and it's a kind of a really good vantage point of looking over the site off to the west across the freeway, the vast sort of large flat area. We, I think, for years have looked at this site and envisioned it would be a logical place for expansion of a commercial node. Here's another image looking a little bit more to the south, sort of closer to Del Rio, and this is an interesting picture because you can see the large swale that bisects that corner of the property, a really interesting natural feature that probably could be used to the benefit of the project to really separate out land uses. So the conceptual plan that we received, we received this from the applicant a few months back, and we've been sort of working with them to try and get this in a position where it's ready to have a first look by the city council, but this is it. It's primarily what I'll call a mixed-use project, about 60,000 square feet of commercial, and a really unique type of commercial that we call experiential commercial, visitor-serving commercial, designed for sort of the brew pub, the winery, possibly bakery, maybe cheese, maybe different things that are part like manufacturing, part visitor-serving, kind of a model similar to Tin City, but maybe pre-planned and a little more tourist-serving. Additionally, they're looking at a housing component. They do want to have apartment units, they do want to have condominium townhome units surrounding the outer edge as a transition into the project, and then a significant visitor-stained portion of the project, which would be anchored by a 120-room hotel, and then 16, what we call short-term stay units, which are also part of a hotel essentially designed for short-term lodging of less than 30 days. Now, we don't have a lot of details on those components of the project at this point, because we still are in a very early pre-application stage, and we haven't accepted this application for processing, so obviously, the applicant hasn't gone out and done a lot of detailed work. I don't know that they have an operator for the hotel, they don't have a lot of interior design work, they don't have a lot of things done until they get permission to say, all right, you can submit an application to the city, and then we'll ask for all the details and do a lot more community outreach and really get into the project. But a list of considerations that we're going to have to look at for this site are, if it's going to go, come into the general plan amendment, what is the appropriate zoning and land use designation for this property, and how can we make sure it's compatible with the neighborhood? How can we make sure it's going to be fiscally sustainable for the city as well as for the applicant developer? And, you know, taking a careful look at some of the issues here. Short-term rental units can be a concern, but make sure that they actually stay that way. Affordable housing is going to be a requirement that we have to implement based on our policies, and we're really going to have to evaluate traffic and access, just like we would at any other commercial node, any other freeway overpass location where you have property close to 101, and you have fairly constrained on-ramp, off-ramp, and close driveways to those locations. So a lot of particulars with that, and particularly here, we don't want to drive traffic in- here, we don't want to drive traffic into an existing residential neighborhood. So very sensitive issue to look at. Definitely want to balance those needs. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. But let's take a look, a little more detail at the actual layout, and what the whole plan is. It's really a mixture of commercial and residential. And again, it's that experience-based, what I'll call experience-based commercial, that I was referring to earlier. And then it's a mix of varying residential types that I'll call a transition zone. I see that as a transition zone from the more rural west side, as you head towards Highway 101. In this commercial zone, it's sort of a transition to multifamily and mixed density. So when we talk about a specific plan, we have a couple of options. Incorporate it into the existing Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan, which makes sense, because it shares a lot of the same traffic issues, even some of the same drainage issues, and a lot of the same environmental topics. That might save us some efficiency and the applicant's some efficiency in terms of the review and documentation and environmental review. And that can guide land use, timing, density, and design, all on its own, without burdening the rest of the existing specific plan. It can do that. Or we could create its own specific plan, something more unique to Beryl Creek. There's really, there's really no significant difference to doing it either way, just some additional cost, probably the applicant, if they did their own. Looking at the zoning options on the property, the specific plan really can be designed to ensure the land uses, where they go on the property, where we want those things specifically, and when we want those things to develop. For example, should the commercial develop prior to the residential? Should there be some phase-in of residential as phases of commercial come forward? We can lock that in for a long period of time by using a specific plan and really guiding that in. Now, the general plan itself on our map has different designations of commercial and residential. Some of those commercial designations, such as commercial park and commercial tourist, don't allow any ground-floor residential. Maybe that's what we want. They don't even allow upstairs residential. Maybe that's an option. And again, some of the residential districts that we have wouldn't allow commercial. So we can carefully place those districts on here. Or another option would be to actually put the entire designation into a commercial retail designation and use the specific plan to allow some residential density to go into it. For example, our commercial retail zone allows up to 20 units per acre within it, and a specific plan can guide whether those are upstairs units, downstairs units, where they are on the site. Anyway, we don't need to worry so much about all of those particulars right now. I think what we can talk about, and what we can guide the applicant team with, and what council can guide staff with, is what, what exactly are you looking for on this particular site? And we can craft the zoning to meet those particular objectives by a number of different measures. But looking at a map, you know, maybe there's a logical boundary to where residential and commercial zoning should be separated. The swale on the property does some of that. The property at the corner, which is already in our general plan as commercial tourist, and already has an approved project on it for that, what we call sort of a micro lodging facility, is in the commercial tourist zone. So it'd be logical to sort of extend that zoning boundary back through the property. Even part of a clubhouse that they have proposed on their project could be in a commercial designation. And that's just an idea of how, how that could happen along that particular line. Again, another option would be to all commercial zoning on the property, and use the specific plan to really guide some of the other situations on there, about what goes first and where everything goes specifically. A big consideration here to talk about is neighborhood compatibility. How can this project fit in with the existing community? What's the appropriate density? What's the appropriate design? What's the appropriate building height and scale? And what is the actual appropriate design themes of the buildings that should fit here? They're all important considerations, and I think that we can definitely give the applicant some feedback as to what we expect for this particular location in Atascadero. It's an interesting juxtaposition between, obviously, the highway and your rural residential side of town. I think what, what seems to be appropriate in a situation is sometimes lower-scale development, agrarian-style themes, things that have sort of a, you know, a little bit of a simpler, maybe farmhouse-type style. In terms of density, in terms of the residential project, what they are proposing for the townhome portion, and that's the portion that abuts San Ramon and Del Rio, is that a density of about 13 units per acre. Right now, our median-density zone in the city allows about 10 units per acre. What they're proposing in the apartment portion results in about 20 units per acre, which is similar to our high-density multifamily designation. Overall, if you mix the two, it's about 17 units per acre, is what they're essentially asking for on the residential portion of the project. Now, within that, we do need to look at some particular design topics in terms of site planning. Street orientation is a big one. Right now, Apple Valley, those houses orient inwards to an interior street, and their backyards face out towards Del Rio, and they're separated by a block wall. Now, there's positive attributes to that, and there's negative attributes to that. A lot of times, what we like to see is a house actually facing the street, even if it's a busier street, because it definitely increases sort of that neighborhood interaction, the pedestrian qualities of it. You get that sort of visual experience, and it increases the aesthetics. And then a lot of times, what you can do is put the garden and yard area on a back alley that's inside, and serve that area by a garage and a garden space. That's an option. Another option is, similar to what Apple Valley is developed with, you wall it out. You put nice landscaping and a sidewalk on the other side, and their backyard space that area. Now, you could do an entirely different thing on San Ramon, because you've got a much quieter, more residential street, where you can have individual entries facing that street, and it's a different situation. But something we can give feedback to the applicant on as they move forward, if we decide to authorize this particular project. Another one, garages. Garages, parking, for example, is always a topic that we like to plan out early, because it changes a lot of things about the entire site and project. Individual garages are a great feature. They provide for some storage. They provide for hiding vehicles. They can look attractive architecturally. Recently, though, the state did change some things on us for even condominium projects, and they do say that now garages can be converted to dwelling units, and that applicants don't have to put in place replacement parking on a percentage of the units in a project, up to 20%. Makes things interesting. We don't know a lot about that new law yet. It hasn't been tried and tested. It's only January 1st of 2020 that it came into effect, and don't know where that's going to go as it works its way through local zoning codes, and people actually implement those sorts of policies. But something to be aware of. Another thing that's obviously a design concern is trash, recycling, greenways. Where do we coordinate that? Typically, a higher-density project hasn't been common receptacle. Typically, a lower-density project has individual service. We can certainly work with waste management and the project applicant to make sure that's coordinated in this project early, should we decide to authorize that. But let's take a look at some of the building design. What you're seeing now in that little image is the townhome residential, which is the outside of the project area on San Ramon and Del Rio. It's essentially a duplex design, two units together, about a two-story height. Scale is pretty similar to what you see on a lot of residential properties on the west side. And I think a tip to look at here is, density doesn't have to be large in apartment like. Density can be complementary to any neighborhood. It's really about the design. And I think what's important is to have variation in height, and variation in color, and variation in style and design. That's what Atascadero is essentially founded on, is custom house design. And when you get cookie cutter designs that are all the same, all the same color, that's where you're going to have an issue with neighborhood compatibility, regardless of the number of units you put into a particular project. Now, in the higher-density development, it's about two and a half stories. They have two stories with some bedroom space in the top. And it actually has, you know, a pretty good appeal to it, similar to a lot of the single-family residential, the newer single-family residential that you see in town. It doesn't necessarily look like a high-density apartment, but we want to make sure up here, then, again, is that we have variety and variation, more variation may be needed. So an example of that, and this is not the project that's being proposed, but this is an example of a typical city block, of how variety and scale can be compatible. You can see in this particular image, there is a lot of different heights and sort of densities. And this is an example of a multifamily project, actually, but at a glance, it looks like a single-family project. But in this project, you've got duplexes, and triplexes, and four units, and you've got single units, and you've got multiple styles. This is just a really generic example, but it's just one idea of how you can get that kind of a thing in a multifamily project, and not have it look like apartments, and still have it look like it's part of a neighborhood. So something to think about. Now, we don't have a lot of images of the rest of the commercial project. We do know that the hotel, the very, very conceptual plan, is a four-story hotel, about 120 rooms. It's set back from the adjacent residential. It is kind of freeway-oriented. Definitely need to look at that closely, though, if we decide to go along with that, and ensure that we've got adequate sound buffering, we've got adequate light buffering, and that we've got good visual screening and compatibility, as we have a project like that, that essentially is next to a rural neighborhood. Now, the remainder of the building design theme, for the commercial, that's the top image there, I would call that sort of an agrarian theme. It's sort of a warehousey theme, kind of similar to what you might see in Tin City, or another sort of light industrial area, but with a little bit of a visitor touch to it. And actually, those can actually integrate into a commercial area quite nicely, with their contemporary storefronts and metal siding and simple forms. Again, a couple images of the residential, and, you know, we can, we can give some comments to that. Now, the short-term rental units, certainly there's opportunity to comment on how that would work. In some cases, these work fantastic. I've visited units like this, where you can rent a complete unit. You can have a family stay there. You can have your own kitchen, like an Airbnb or VRBO kind of rental. It's great. But how do you guarantee it stays that way? You need mechanisms that are in place to retain that. And are we comfortable with that? So definitely need to like, take a close look at that. On the site, they're proposed up against the back of some existing residential properties, sort of towards the back of the site, but in sort of the commercial component of the site, and could be sort of an annex to the hotel product on, on the site. Another topic, affordable housing. We can definitely give some comments on affordable housing. And through the specific plan, we actually have the ability to cater, have the project catered to what we need in terms of affordable housing units, as long as we stay within those percentages. So for example, it could be a different ratio than our normal policy. Maybe we need more low and very low. In fact, at this point, we already have pretty much met our, our regional housing needs requirement for moderate units for some years to come. So we can look at that, give some comments on that. I'm going to specify if we're going to do affordability here, where, you know, in that site, could those units be? Now, again, looking at traffic, we haven't completed a significant comprehensive traffic analysis. What we have done, we have done a lot of work recently for Del Rio, because we're trying to really get the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan on the east side of 101 going again. So we've got some alternatives on the table. We reviewed this, that project at council recently, and we looked at potential development over here as part of doing those numbers. So we already have run some concepts about how this would fit in with the bigger scheme, and there are ways to make it work without significant impact. But what we don't know is the project details itself. Where this project spills out on the San Ramon, where this project spills out on the Del Rio, how it impacts that localized traffic, how it queues onto the freeway, and how it could impact the existing residential neighborhood. Those are the questions here, about those entries and exits, controlling left turns. Those are the details that we haven't delved into yet, that will need community input, that will need traffic engineer input, that will need analysis to make sure this can work. So big questions there. We will need to do that additional analysis. You know, how can we route traffic back to the freeway while avoiding significant traffic at San Ramon? And we don't want to put traffic into the neighborhood. That's the, that's the key thing there. So this, this is a key commercial node for the city. There's not a lot of this sort of flatland left. This is certainly an opportunity to connect this to the, the other part of Del Rio. It's possible that the residential portion of this project does help it be financially viable to the applicant, but we also need to ensure that viable commercial uses can help support our jobs-to-housing balance, and that we have neighborhood compatibility for a successful project. Those are the key, key points. We haven't done environmental review yet. What we do know is a number of things have changed in the state recently that haven't made it a lot easier to do environmental review. The VMT situation, vehicle miles traveled, has made it more difficult to develop large housing projects, and it's made like a task at arrow because of our jobs-to-housing balance. Additionally, it's getting more difficult for projects to achieve neutrality when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions and air quality. These are the triggers, in addition to traffic, that make it difficult to mitigate projects without just calling it an unavoidable significant impact. And once we do that, we tip the scales, and we headed into a full-blown environmental impact report. So that's the question here. We don't know if we're going to trigger an EIR yet. Typically, a project of this scale, once you get over 100 residential units, once you get over a certain number of commercial square footage, and if you haven't already assumed that in your existing general plan, and you're doing a change to your general plan to accommodate it, that's where you tend to trigger some of these particular issues, and you can't mitigate for them, because they're just a full-on change. So that's something we'll need to take a closer look at, and figure out how we can accomplish those, those items. As any larger residential project, we would need to annex this into a community facilities district. That will help offset some service costs a little bit here. It is a somewhat complicated project, so there's multiple components here, but the application fees are designed generally to recoup the staff effort. And we would have to probably hire consultants if we get into environmental work, or other pieces, such as the background reports that take some additional time. So again, it's, it's one of those few remaining interesting big vacant parcels. Certainly a great candidate for a general plan amendment. We just need to make sure we've got the right project to do that, and, and the right neighborhood compatibility. Generally, we've got a few options that we can do here with an authorization. We can authorize this submitted as it is, and process it as time allows, or we can provide specific direction to alter the land use, alter the layout, and ask the applicant to return again, so we can take a closer look at some of those issues. Or we can decide not to authorize at all, if it doesn't meet any of our city term goals. Now, if we do proceed with authorization, of course, you know, we, we do want to do additional things. There's some other steps to talk about. I'll talk about that in a minute. But what I also want to remind us about, it doesn't signal, it doesn't have to signal that the project's going to get approved, or guaranteed that the project would be approved. So really, all we're now, all doing now is, should we open the door to this project, and open the door to further review, or not? And once we do open that door, obviously, the, the applicant is going to spend significant additional funds, and so will staff. And so we want to make sure we're headed in the right direction when we do that. We do know that we need further analysis. We do know we need to give the applicant some feedback. And we do know that we do need to do some additional community outreach. The applicant team needs to do a community meeting. They will need to do another traffic analysis, and they'll need to talk to the community, make sure they don't get too far ahead of the project before they get the community feedback, and, and get the buy-in from the adjacent neighborhood to help them guide this project along. We will also need to look at how this project can be served by sewer. Right now, there's a list station that serves Apple Valley that will need to be upgraded, or there'll be, need to be another list station. We'll need to look at the details of air quality and vehicle miles traveled. We'll need to look at the civil engineering for the site, and the grading, and the drainage, and all those things. And if we want, we can come back for a check-in as we continue to proceed down the line with the project. What I've got up on the What I've got up on the screen now is a summary of the topics that I'd like to be able to go through with council. And as always, we have the alternatives, very similar to what I mentioned a bit earlier about the direction. But at this time, I'm going to open it up to questions and end my formal presentation and just leave the summary of topics up on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And as this is listed as a public hearing, it technically isn't one, but listed as one, let's go ahead and do ex parte. I will start, actually, Councilmember Newsom, myself, our city manager and our development director, Mr. Dunsmore. We met with the applicant last fall, went to their architect's office and had a pretty thorough meeting, so we did have that conversation. Other than that, I did receive one email from the public that lives in Apple Valley and isn't thrilled with this and really needs to know a lot more about it. I'll just kind of go from left to right on my screen, Councilmember Newsom. I know I kind of did part of yours.
Thank you. I haven't had any more communication since then. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Borbo.
I've had no ex parte. We did receive more than one email, though, in the last several hours, two or three, I think, total, from neighboring residents, but I've had no ex parte with any individuals.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk. You're muted.
About that, I've heard from the individuals Josh Kross and Lee Perkins, and aside from that, the emails have been addressed to the city council directly.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, go ahead and let's go with questions for our community development director.
I'll go first.
All right. Councilmember Newsom.
Is the applicant aware of the additional impact fees that may be placed upon their project going forward, even not having the traffic analysis done?
They have not received an estimate of development impact fees at this time, and they may or may not be aware of all of those details.
At what point will we have the traffic analysis done or at least a second draft going forward with their project being analyzed into the traffic pattern?
So, if they're authorized to proceed with the general plan amendment, we would give them a series of items that we would need for a complete application based on the direction that they've received tonight. For example, if we say, hey, they need to reduce their number of homes, or reduce commercial or increase commercial, they need to lock in all those numbers before they do a traffic analysis. Otherwise, they're going to have to repeat those things later. So, every unit, every square footage of commercial alters the traffic analysis quite substantially. So, once they have a locked-in design that everyone feels comfortable with, then we would say, all right, proceed with your traffic analysis now, and then we would be able to evaluate those results.
The public outreach, at what stage does that usually happen? Is it the next stage if they were to get approved, or is it something that they should be doing as part of their submittal process?
Typically, we like to have an applicant do community outreach even before they come to council for the authorization to proceed. Our policy is a little bit unclear about exactly when that should occur, but the earlier the better. That way, they get community feedback before the design is baked. But it's not too late to start doing that work now. Obviously, it's a little more difficult with a shelter-in-home order to do community outreach, but it still can be done, and I would advise that they do that, obviously, if they get authorization, immediately start into that before they complete their design work so they get the feedback into the design.
You also mentioned that they could either, we could amend either the specific plan or the general plan. You said there would be a cost difference. Is the cost difference to the city or to the applicant, depending on which one they were to choose or we select for them?
So, it would be an additional cost to the applicant if they had to amend the general plan again repeatedly over time, and it's more tightly regulated. It's easier to amend just a specific plan and don't than it is a general plan because the general plan amendments are strongly regulated by the state in terms of how many times a year you can do it, and of course, we need to go through this authorization process, what have you. So, there's more cost to doing that. But then again, once you lock in the general plan also, too, on a property, there's more certainty it's going to stay that way for some time because, you know, it's, I did the environmental review and everything else.
And then, final question I have is phases of development. You had stated that council could play in or make recommendations on how they develop the property, whether it's residential, goes after commercial. How do you see that happening, or is that something that happens at a later phase or a later stage in this process of submittals?
I think we should give initial feedback to timing and phasing now if we're going to authorize to proceed, but the details of that can also come back later as they develop their project. But, for example, if this council wants to ensure that, you know, commercial portions are developed first, we should be saying that. If there's something else, we should be saying that, and they can then devise their plan around that and proceed forward with another plan that meets those particular goals.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you. I have a number of questions, and some of them may, you may want to defer to the applicant, but I won't necessarily edit them all with that assumption. First, at the larger strategic level, can you tell me, are there any aspects of this property and its development that are dependent on, for their success, on what does or does not happen at the property currently for sale by Walmart across the freeway?
Hmm. Not sure I really understand the question entirely. Maybe you could rephrase that a bit. So, if, I'm trying to think of what you're, we're asking. Can you try that again?
Okay. So, the question is really how much relationship there is for the commercial viability in particular of this project, depending on what choices are made about what's done with the land used by Walmart. Is there, are there important synergies or competitions, or are they both relatively independent?
It's relatively independent. This is a very different land use than we have being contemplated anywhere in this commercial node, other than, of course, the hotel that's being constructed now and a couple of restaurant areas. This is really designed to be somewhat of a standalone land use that can really draw not only locally but regionally as well. And so, regardless of what happens on the Walmart site, it can have its own draw to it. Obviously, the more synergy you get from other land uses that are complementary, it certainly helps.
Okay. One of your questions was about, that you asked for feedback on, was about incorporating this into the Del Rio specific plan versus having its own specific plan. Does either one of those options make it easier to coordinate the region as a whole for faster traffic flow, for making sure that the housing that's being developed has the supports it needs, et cetera?
Exactly. It makes sense to have one specific plan at one commercial node and have it all working towards the common goal of having the overpass traffic work and having all of those issues work in one particular location. So, if it was a very different scenario with different connections to it and different types of land uses, I'd probably say it'd be different, probably better served by being its own unique thing. But there's some benefit and some cost savings and some better planning that can be done by having one specific plan, and it doesn't have to burden the existing property in the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my next question, too, about the impact on those property owners. Good. Can you talk about what's been incorporated in this property about things that we've learned from what works particularly well in other local environments such as Dove Creek, where you've got walking pathways that allow people to exercise, some pocket parks that are good support for residents to develop their own small events and pocket park, little pocket playgrounds for the youngest children to gather at that support families living in the multi-family environment? Has any of that been incorporated yet into this design?
They are illustrating a clubhouse area. They are illustrating some pretty good connectivity and pathways. They are also illustrating sort of a small amphitheater area and taking advantage of the topography on this site. But it is certainly key to look at pathways for connectivity, pathways to get to other neighborhoods, pathways to integrate this neighborhood with its commercial component. Those are all key attributes that I think need to be continuously looked at as they continue to get refined throughout the project. But right now, we have all those things on a very conceptual level, very high level.
At what point in the design process do those get worked in further?
So, if, for example, we authorize to proceed, we would ask them for a number of different points to clarify on their project towards getting a complete application, and then what we would do, or what we could do, is come back to the city council for a check-in and a study session to go over those things and look at the progress and make sure they're headed in that appropriate direction for the direction we gave them.
That seems wise, given the scale of the project.
Yes.
Of the, you asked for options about initially incorporating on Del Rio, does that, any of the, either option change things with respect to the amount of staff time involved, the speed of the approval process, or the ability of council to exert appropriate control over ensuring that commercial does get developed and not only, that the residential portion of this is not the only part that gets developed?
Anytime you have to reinvent the wheel, obviously, it's more time and cost for both applicant and staff. So, if we go with our template we have now for our commercial area specific plan, it's going to make it easier. Now, in any case, either one of those, we have the ability to have city control on timing and on design and on all of the details built into the specific plan, built in specific to each property, and, you know, it can be called, for example, Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan West, and it has its own features to it, even though it's part of the same specific plan and uses all the other features of it.
Okay. That sounds good. Is it, the, it was not clear to me where the parking is going to be here yet. And I guess that's, you know, are we too early to see where parking is going to go and whether there's going to be enough of it?
There is parking at a conceptual form. I don't know that we have the exact number of spaces. I think the applicant can tell us more about that, but they do have substantial areas shown on the commercial side for parking. It looks like it's pretty big, and there are parking areas integrated into the residential portion as well. But let's check in with the applicant on those details.
Okay. Because the competition between the commercial and residential for limited parking would be certainly a concern.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to hold off on the applicant until we open for public comment, so if you could give us some time here. Thank you.
Thanks. Another question, with regard to the impact on street parking, you mentioned that there are new state laws that would, if we have garages, would allow people then to convert those garages, a certain portion of them, into junior ADUs, accessory dwelling units, so mini granny houses, and in that, without replacing the parking, which puts a little bit further stress on, on, on street parking. In the event that you've got a situation where there is sort of competition between the residential and commercial uses for, or at least, or competition within the residential group for a limited number of spaces, would it be possible to have something so that people, say, if they convert, if they're not going to park a vehicle in their garage, that they would need a street parking permit? And would the city, if we do something like that, would the city then, basically to give it a financial incentive for people to choose about what, what they're doing with their garage space or how much stress they're putting on the neighborhood parking? If we did that, would we need an ordinance by the city, or is that something that could be done within development?
Within the development. So, we would assume that this would be a private development with private interior streets, all done under a master plan development, so it wouldn't be on the city public parking area. It would be on their own private development, so they could choose to craft that, to make that all work, and we could choose to craft, put policies into a specific plan to make that work. The strange thing is, though, what the state's done is they have now said that even CCNRs can be violated to accommodate these ADUs. So, it's interesting where they're going with that. It hasn't been tested yet, but I'm a bit skeptical of how the whole thing will work, so to speak, you know?
We're all learning as we go on that.
Yeah.
Another question that was up in terms of trash and recycling, and that's obviously a key, because if you have a fairly densely populated neighborhood where everyone has individual trash cans, then, again, it's a parking impacted, impact on trash day. If you're driven on Santa Isabel on trash day, or if you go home to there, people have told me that the half the street parking is taken up by everybody's trash bins, and yet those are still not nearly as far apart as the waste management wants to have in order for their equipment to work properly. So, is it possible to have a mix of individual trash bins and, and larger collective waste bins in a development like this, or does it all have to be one or the other?
Sure can, as long as you design the development so that you can get the trucks to be able to drive to where you need to get them to go, to either pick up individual wheelers or to pick up the large waste bins. But you can do combinations. Sure.
Okay. Let's see. In the two-and-a-half-story apartments, are those, are the individual units all multi-story, or will there be plenty of opportunity for single-story units that might be suitable for ADA access or for seniors who don't want to take stairs?
I believe they have accommodated some units like that, but let's forward that question to the applicant. We don't have floor plans for the units yet, and all we have is what you've got there in your packet, which is an overall site plan and some of the elevation. So, but I know that in our discussions, they've talked that way, so let's, again, pose that question to the applicant.
Fair enough. On the short-term rental units, who is going to own them? Are they going to have individual separate ownership, like condos or a timeshare thing or?
From what I understand, they would like to have individual ownership, and they can do that through a commercial condominium, just like a commercial office project. You can break those into individual airspace ownership and sell them as commercial ownership, even if they're basically a hotel. Basically, a way it would be is a individual motel unit that could be individually owned, and that way, people could, you know, rent them to VRBO, Airbnb, things like that, or it could all be owned by a hotel motel. So, I think, again, another applicant question as to how they perceive that, but at first, it's been sort of mentioned to us at the city that it would be individual ownership options.
If the, or any of the various choices for how we manage this as a planning thing, do they make it more difficult for the council to specify issues about who manages those or who owns them? Because, you know, having a bunch of short-term units all with separate management as well as separate ownership could be very chaotic. could be very chaotic. It could make the neighborhood impacts on the surrounding rural residential areas harder to manage. On the other hand, if there's, if they're collectively managed, if there's good onsite supervision and support that can keep things handy, you're creating a sort of party zone, you're creating some maybe party houses. You take the pressure off the community of people wanting to create party houses in the middle of neighborhoods where they shouldn't be. It can't be one.
Yeah, I don't know that. Yeah, I think that's a lot of detail to get into at this level. But certainly, I think it could, it could be quite complex to have all different ownerships there. But you could have the specific plan and a CCNR speak to how that works. And maybe it doesn't change things. I've, I've seen developments that have gone both ways in vacation rental situations. And I, you know, I don't think it's detrimental to go either way. I think what's most important to the city is that if they are zoned and sold to us as commercial motel, hotel, vacation rental units, that they stay that way and don't later get converted to something that's long-term residential, because then that changes obviously the taxing structure. We don't get the transient occupancy tax and it changes into a different product.
Yeah, okay. Just, are flooding issues addressed in the, in the plan? Where you've got a big square in the middle of the property?
Flooding, you said flooding?
Flooding, yeah.
So there's no onsite flooding issues. There are off-site water flooding issues on San Ramon Road. There is a pond that forms on San Ramon Road quite seasonally that does, you know, take some runoff from adjacent properties. So that's something that has to be taken into consideration. If you build on this property, are you going to make those flooding situations worse downstream? You can't do that. You've got to make sure that that doesn't happen. So those are, part of the review process is going to include civil engineering and evaluating that issue to make sure they don't worsen any off-site flood impacts. But there's no onsite flood issue.
Okay. And then you meant, you described this as a standalone project, but it's kind of its own neighborhood, its own universe, with both commercial and residential elements. As we think about the affordable housing component of that, it's really about, is it possible to, to, at least in the earlier planning phases, marry the mix of affordable housing that's required to the nature of the jobs that are being created in the commercial zone? So that if, for instance, they create some coworking space and some other, an office space that would attract more professional workers or a high-tech manufacturing piece with some, you know, commercial engagement that, that might, that would create head of household jobs, then maybe you have a little less requirement if, on some of the affordable housing. Otherwise, you want to make sure that in the affordable housing, in the low and very low, that people who are changing the beds in the hotel and sweeping the floors in the commercial can afford to live in a neighborhood that they are supporting. At least, you know, in, to some, as you think about this as a self-contained unit and supporting our city's jobs and housing, a healthier balance for our city. Can that be married up in the plan?
Exactly. In fact, that's our primary goal, is to make something that's complete, that is basically going to help with our vehicle miles traveled. That is a primary goal, is to make it a complete community, complete neighborhood. And it does appear it could be that way for some of those residential units that could serve this area. And that even Apple Valley could, you know, benefit from this area by having things to go to that, you know, are from their neighborhood to go eat and entertain and whatnot. Or the people that live there that work in that location. So the more of that we can do, the better we are in our environmental analysis and the better we are in overall city planning by making a complete project. That is definitely our goal.
Can we also, in the project, specify preferences that local workers be hired for the construction? Because that too would help the impact on vehicle miles traveled. If you get local folks instead of people coming in from Bakersfield or wherever.
I don't know. That's a good question, if we can do that. Might be a legal question. I'm not sure.
Okay. And then left. He's laughing, smiles on the council faces, they're rising left. The, the big issue, you know, for me in looking at this is that, is traffic flow. It's not so much the numbers about impact. It's the nature of where and how are you going to turn into the project? How close as you travel in and out of the project? How many people are going to be coming into the hotel and the brew pubs and whatever else is there that are driving right past residential things being created? How are we getting the left turns? People going back to the freeway without having them all going down into the residential neighborhood to have, is there going to be a U-turn capability or a roundabout or some kind of thing that would manage some of those impacts? And the design of the project depends on being able to get the cat traffic flow right.
Yeah.
So, so I'm having trouble with the, with the sequencing that you described where we have to do all the design work before we can do the traffic analysis. When, you know, there's a phase of the traffic work that is absolutely essential to designing this project in a way that's going to, going to work and flow. I think, because you could, because there's a lot of exciting potential here. If we can get the flow of the traffic work out properly and create enough things within there that it's a self-sustaining neighborhood.
Exactly. No, there are two big separate things. There are the big topics of basic flow, where the car is going to go. But then there's the bigger thing about number of cars. How many really are there? And we need to know both those before we can really jump into that analysis. Traffic engineers and, you know, the manuals they use, it's all about these numbers, these number games. But you're right, there are some basic underlying things that we don't know yet. I mean, doesn't matter how many units you have in there or how big the commercial project is, how can they safely get in and out of this location? What we do know is that the further they are from the freeway with the driveway, the easier it will be to make a left turn back to the freeway. We also have a condition, a requirement right now on the project that's being developed or it's been approved at the corner, the micro lodging, that they share their primary access with this particular project. So that's another thing that has to get worked out. But yeah, there's a couple unknowns here that are big topics and could lead to substantial redesign of the project. So they need to have a basic number of units. They need to have a basic number of square footage before we do those things. But they don't have to have everything dialed in before we start that analysis. Because the analysis, you're right, it will lead to site design changes most likely.
Yeah, so I'd rather have that drive, drive the bus in terms of the design of the site rather than, you know, walls or no walls? What, you know, what architectural, you know, find points are there? If we can get an appropriate traffic flow, we can work the rest of it out. What we don't want to do is get up into a situation like we have on the south end of town at San Antonio Road going into Santa Barbara, where it's coming in right next to the freeway. And, you know, many people talk about how dangerous that intersection is and how difficult that is to manage at key, high-traffic flow times because of that very, the confluence of a road that carries a lot of traffic right next to that freeway on-ramp. There will be, this other, this other mini hotel thing in between. But it's still very close to the intersection. So just to my mind, the flow is going to be the key to making this thing work right.
Yes. Are you able to see the image on a screen still?
Yes.
Okay. Is my face on there too or?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, you've been seeing me this whole time. I didn't know.
You're hiding behind the instruction.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Perotam.
Yes, unfortunately for you, I have several questions. But first, I want to go back to a question that Councilmember Newsom asked. And I was a little confused by the answer. If you go back to the issues slide or things we should consider slide, this is a request for, you know, a potential general plan amendment. If I understood it correctly, before I got confused, we'd have to do a general plan amendment and then subsequently decide whether they're in an existing specific plan for Del Rio or have their own specific plan. You can't jump straight to a specific plan and not have the general plan amendment, can you? When you're talking about changing, you know, this considerable of a zoning change? Or do I?
We do everything at once. So we come back and you could take all the actions in one council hearing and do it the whole deal. So we typically wouldn't do the general plan amendment and then come back and do other pieces. We would typically take one action.
Okay, I understand. But you, I mean, it's not just a specific plan. You've got to do the general plan amendment to do the rezoning. And then you incorporate the specific plan as part of it, just like you did in Walmart across the street.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so speaking of general plan amendment, if you go to, I think you had a slide for it that shows the property with a big star in it. And if not for council, it's on page 43 of the agenda. You, in this, it shows the urban services line.
Yeah.
And, and this is important because to me, I mean, a general plan amendment, rezoning this much property and rezoning it this much. In other words, we're not talking about going from residential suburban, two and a half acre minimum to, let's say, one acre minimum, you know, a incremental or a less substantial change. We're talking about going from residential suburban to major commercial. And you said an average of 13 units per acre. You know, that's a big change. And so, you know, I would tend to look at that and go, okay, well, people in the area, you know, had an expectation. So there needs to be a community benefit here. But I'm curious about the urban services line, which the urban services line indicates areas to which the city does or expects to provide urban services, in particular, meaning sewer, as I've understood it. Is that right?
That is correct.
So with the urban services line, it goes through, so most of this property, of these six parcels, it looks like five of them have been within the urban services line with, meaning there's an eventual expectation that they would be served by sewer. And then it cuts across San Ramon to take in, looks like about the first eight or 10 residential properties on the west side of San Ramon. And that being the case, what does that say about the long-term expectation of the urban services line being there in terms of either the general plan or any actions the council has previously taken? And when was the urban services line put there? Was it put there, you know, 40 years ago when the city was incorporated and its first general plan came around? Or was it moved there some other time subsequently?
I don't know when that exact line was moved there. I know it shows up very clearly in the 2002 general plan. Whether it was there prior to 2002, I'm not sure. But what it does do, it does open the door to exploring additional density there. Because when you've got sewer service extended to a property, obviously it allows you to have a smaller lot size and higher density. So it was a thought, basically topographically and through lift stations, that you could get a sewer service as far as that location. Now, why it goes through that other property line where the hotel site is proposed is not known. And it's not a huge difference as to whether it's moved one property further north or not. In either scenario, we do have to do some sewer service work, some lift station work to serve this entire property. And it would have to be done in a way that can serve the entire project. And we would adjust the urban services line to meet that new service. But if these other properties wanted to come in and do something at some point and be part of another general plan amendment, it would certainly, you know, be their benefit because they are in that urban services line and they could, you know, extend sewer service or possibly contribute to the lift station to do that as well. That's something we might look at, for example, in the future as we do a citywide general plan update. Where are those things appropriate? But there's other things you need to take into consideration as to whether it's even appropriate to increase density on some of those areas that are close to a creek or have significant tree coverage. They're often a neighborhood that's already developed, you know, is there a demand and desire to do that?
I completely understand, but that's why I asked the question. Because in terms of the impact on these other property owners, one could look at it two ways. I mean, if, if their, you know, density could be increased through, you know, through the availability of sewer service, their properties might become more valuable. Although I'm sure many of them, having lived there a long time, would not be interested. But, you know, they could see an increase in their property value as a result of something like this if they were potentially interested. Okay, so, the other question I had, Apple Valley is served by sewer. And Apple Valley includes, you know, is considerable amount of open, open space. They're, they're not, you know, very big lots by a Tascadero standard, but they're not, they're not real small or high-density. Was Apple Valley, I, you know, I assume it required a general plan amendment and that prior to it being built, that was residential suburban zoning? Do you know what that was? Because I know that's probably 15 years ago now.
You know, I don't know. Maybe one of my other staff knows. I'll see if someone can provide me a comment. Oh, it was, I did get a comment. It was done with the 2002 general plan. I don't know what it was prior to that. So maybe during the 2002 general plan, it was rezoned to a higher density and they did a plan development and created that project.
Well, that's, I would kind of guess that that was the case. I don't recall it, I mean, I certainly lived here, but I don't recall the specifics on that. Point being that, you know, that was created out of residential suburban zoning. And so I'm, you know, I'm more concerned frankly about the folks who have lived on San Ramon for 20, 30, 40 years, always expecting it to be residential suburban. So, okay, and do you know, I mean, I was curious about the urban services line, you know, including residential suburban lots? Because when somebody zones residential suburban, you know, it's a two and a half acre minimum. So it's interesting, you know, what the expectation was of extending the urban services line over lots with that low of a density of zoning.
It is unusual. We have a lot of that in the city though, too, along El Camino Real, just south of the Del Rio plan. There's a number of lots that are zoned RS and they are within the urban services line. And in the future, when we do a general plan update, those are the areas that we can look at for different potential.
Right. And I understand that on the, on the east side where sewer has largely been available all along and it's closer to other high-density things. San Ramon, we talked about, you know, the impact on San Ramon traffic-wise. What is the status of San Ramon as a street? Is it a collector? It's certainly not an arterial, I assume, but it's, is it a collector street? Maybe that's a Nick, our Public Works question.
Yeah, that's a Nick, that's a Nick question. I don't know the status of that one. I don't have that map in front of me. It looks like a collector, but it could also be a, a local.
Gotcha. Okay.
Could we maybe bring Nick on for that really quick? There he is.
Oh, here's Nick. I see him. I see something.
Oh, it's the wrong, wrong direction of webcam, so I'll turn.
All right, we can hear you.
We just need to hear you.
San Ramon, I'm looking right now what that information is, but it might change. It might be a collector just because it ties into the interchange to the north. But it acts very much like a local road. So, but I'm checking that information right now and we'll let you know in a second.
As part of, I don't want to get, you know, too far into the details, but just conceptually, if we allowed this to go forward, we could provide very clear guidance tonight. I won't say specific guidance, but clear emphatic guidance tonight that they would have to, you know, figure out how to minimize any increase in traffic on San Ramon or at least San Ramon past, you know, an entrance driveway or something. I'm assuming we would have the ability to make that clear.
Of course.
Okay. And. Okay, and, um, I'm curious about, um, in terms of the phasing of the project. Because, you know, I think a lot of people would say, well, you know, this is a big ask by a developer to say, hey, I want to convert all this residential suburban land to commercial and higher density. And in that sense, I think it is a big ask. And normally I'm a pro-development, pro-building things person, but it's, this is a big ask. And so, and, and so I think the logical question is, what's the benefit to the community of allowing it? And the, and the benefit is some of that commercial development that we'd like to see in a hotel in particular, which cities always like because they're, you generate a lot of transient occupancy tax, which helps fund city services that everybody wants to see funded. But you, you look at phasing, how clear can we be about phasing? Where you, could it be where you say, okay, you know, if you build the hotel, you know, you can build a quarter of these townhomes or something? And then if you build these other retail, you, you can build X amount. Can we be, when, when we get there, can we be that specific in the phasing requirement?
Absolutely, you can be as specific as you want. You can have it dialed into the number of units, square footage of commercial area, timing, all of those things. And back to your other comment, this, this is a big ask. But also at the same time, you start looking at the way the general plan was designed and a lot of our other policies. And you look at this location and you have a location like this that is not only primarily within the urban services line, but it's along the freeway. It doesn't really meet the characteristics of rural estates or residential suburban quality. So that's the other thing that I just wanted to throw out there. You gotta, you gotta think of it that way as well, you know?
Right, I mean, I would, would have thought though, maybe when, at two thousand and two, that would have been the time to maybe at least make it instead of residential suburban, like make it a one acre minimum or something like that. So this wouldn't seem like such a leap.
Sometimes driven by property ownership, you know?
Right, okay. Okay, and then I'm assuming we can also specify regarding the neighborhood meetings. We could specify a timing as to when we would want those to take place. If we, if we said, you know, we'll agree to let this move to the next step, but you've got to have some neighborhood meetings, you know, with, we could say ninety days or, we could be fairly specific. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
And, okay. And then I'll save some other questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, with regards to, and this is Mayor Moreno for anyone listening, we haven't been saying everybody's names, so just to keep everybody up to speed. Regarding the issue with the state law and the ADU's possibility with garages, in that state law, is there any lot size designation or like square footage minimum or something like that? Like any garage greater than X amount or if the lot size is such and such amount, then an ADU can be added? Or is it just any garage can be turned into a junior ADU?
There is no lot size minimum. It simply says that in a multifamily project, even if projects governed by HOA, that a certain percentage, twenty percent of the garages could be converted to ADUs without mandating that they replace the parking on-site. That's how I've.
So not only do you lose parking, but then you add people without more parking for whatever, you know, whatever individual or individuals may live there. So then, is the only other option, if we don't want to encourage that, and I don't know where the rest of the council sits on that, but if we didn't want to encourage that, is it just your traditional carport? Or is there something else? Because I know, you know, certainly garages, covered parking, or not covered parking, but a garage lends to the, the quality of character in a, in a development. So what are, what other options exist that don't cheapen it?
Yeah, I think best way to look at this would probably be a combination of things with some units having garages, some having carports, some having open parking. And that way, you know, only a small percentage of the units have the garages and so therefore maybe that would be below the threshold of what you could convert in an overall project. And maybe that's one way, if you wanted to guarantee that you're going to preserve those parking spaces, that that could be done. I think we need to look at options like that.
Okay. We talked about the, the orientation of the, of the townhomes on both Del Rio and San Ramon. And you had mentioned that you could have, similar to Apple Valley, the wall in the units facing inward so that you had that compatibility, I guess you could say, on Del Rio. But then on San Ramon, it might, might be more appropriate for them to be outward facing. I'm, I'm trying to imagine, wouldn't that disrupt the flow inside? Wouldn't that be kind of like you've got these folks along Del Rio and they come out their front and then the other, they're looking at the back of another home that's over on San Ramon? It just, it doesn't seem very.
It could be designed tactfully either way, without interrupting.
Tactfully?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. A lot of times what they'll do with a project like this is, is the interior roads act more like an alley with parking and garage areas facing that backside and, and sort of small courtyard gardens. And then their front door opens to the, you know, outside other side and they're all done that way. I think it's, that's also a good question for the applicant, how they intend to deal with that. I've seen it done a number of different ways quite successfully.
Yeah, because I wonder if there's a way, if everybody's inward facing, that one, you make it look, look good and compatible outside of the area. But then on the inside, hopefully it becomes more neighborhood feeling and, you know, I don't know, that's not my area next to the piece, but.
You can definitely do it that way. And so basically if, if you have varying wall heights and good landscape on the outside, and then you have all the front doors and front yards sort of facing towards an interior street, it can have a good approach as well. And that's sort of what, you know, Apple Valley has done. And if we drive through that neighborhood, you get that neighborhood feel. And on the outside, you know, you've got a good landscape buffer and you can even, you know, go a step beyond that too, so.
Yeah, okay. What, well, I think some of these end up coming during more of deliberation and nailing down just how do we, how do we ensure some of these things that we've been talking about? So I think I'll, I'll hold those off for later. And if we don't have any other questions right now, I will go ahead and open up to public comment. Are we good to go?
Mayor Moreno, this is Nick DeBarck.
Hi, Nick.
So I did check San Ramon. It is a local functional classification for the whole distance between Del Rio and El Camino.
Local road between, between, you said Del Rio and?
And El Camino Real going up and over the freeway on the north end by home people. So the whole road is.
Okay, got it.
Local road or residential road.
All of it, okay. All right, thank you. And what we'll do now is we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. And our, what we usually do is we let the applicant speak first. And normally we, we limit everyone to three minutes, but with the applicant, we like to give them a little more time. So we'll bring on the applicant and if you could bring your, your comments to about, you know, a ten-minute frame of time would be good. And then we can ask you any other questions that we might have and then we'll open it up to any other public comment. And so I'll see, is that Mr. Martin that's with us here? Hi, Mr. Martin. So I realize you've got a presentation, so can you keep it that in ten minutes?
You know, I ran through it a couple times today and I was right at that ten-minute mark, so I'll do my best, I promise.
Perfect, and if there's anything you heard us say that you can incorporate into that, all the better.
I will do my best. That was quite a thorough investigation of Phil. Thank you, Phil, so much. Luke, am I able to present now? I think you, you have to give me control. And while maybe, maybe while he's doing that, I just, I just wanted to extend a huge thank you, Mayor, Council members. This is amazing, the dedication you're putting in to be doing this from your house right now. I, I'm simply blown away. So as a Atascadero resident, thank you for your service and I am so impressed at, that you're willing to tolerate. I don't know of a better word than tolerate going through this process. As a public member, we feel honored to be a part of this, so.
You're welcome.
I just want to make sure, like, everybody, are you able, are you able to see right now? I have the staff report up, are you able to see that or are you seeing my other screen?
No, we're seeing your desktop.
All right, let's make sure this works. Now are you looking at the staff report?
Yes.
All right, so I, I have that up. I wanted to make sure that works. I, I have the, the actual applicant with me as well. For those of you who don't know me, I am Scott Martin. I'm a architect, I'm a design director and principal with RRM Design Group. So from the design side of things, I think I'll, I'll be able to answer those sorts of questions, both Eric and Jack are here as the applicants. And can ask more, answer some more of the, the operational issues in, in any of those sorts of questions. And you had a plethora of both. So I also just want to really appreciate the fact that you actually read everything and looked into everything and the thought that you've given this so far. I'll keep my presentation to about ten minutes, try to address a handful of what you said along the way. And really just try to demonstrate why we think this is the, the appropriate time for the appropriate project. So with that, um, um, thank you. I quickly, I'll go through, went through some team introductions. Phil did a fabulous job in his staff report, so I'll try to cut right to the chase of some of your location, general plan policy, sort of what we've done over time. Both Heather's mentioned that we have met with some of you. We've solicited input from the community, we, we've made iterations, show you where we're at now, which I can only guarantee is not where we will be at, at the end. And then talk about some of the bigger ticket issues like neighborhood compatibility, potential city benefits and, and what those next steps are. I do want to pull directly from your general plan, we're not making this up. This is all from your policy guidance. So this is clearly noted as a mixed-use node. We think it's a wonderful sort of gateway to the city of Atascadero along its major commercial thoroughfare. I think it reiterates along with the urban reserve line that this is the right place. There is some sensitivity here. If you haven't been onsite, it's absolutely beautiful. Eric got me out and I, we can actually go all throughout. I love, Phil, your pictures are so green from the hotel across the street. It's, it's beautiful. But there is some natural sort of topography and defining characteristics of this site. Of course you have the freeway, I think that's the biggest one. But this, this sort of breeze in the land, this natural swale, if you will, provides some oak habitat, provides some vegetative habitat. And really a, a character-defining area of, of this project. And then the, the piece furthest to the south is that which engages most with the surrounding neighborhood context. And I think alleviates sort of what could happen here and provides transition on out. And that, that's really what our land use plan is showing is, you know, in past eras, Euclidian zoning would have dictated, this is only this kind of zone or that is only this kind of zone, there's only single family. And that's a, that's a very sort of antiquated way of looking at project development, much more so with specific plans and other planning functions. You're allowed to have more project integration and if you will, a little blurrier lines. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to really intensify uses where they belong, where they're seen by thousands and thousands of people on the freeway every day. And then detensify that as it blends into the neighborhood. We probably haven't done it perfect yet. And I think every time we have an iteration and evolve the plan, we get better and better. So I look forward to that. We are using your general plan policies and, and strategic growth management. This is, I believe, one hundred percent in line. I hope, I tried to send this out to Phil ahead of time, so I hope you had a time, had a chance to look at this. I'm just going to hit some highlights about the type of smart growth that the, the general plan is calling for. So we're looking for more walkable communities. We are trying to de-emphasize the automobile. We all know this is Atascadero, we all have more than one car sitting in our driveway. We, we still are sort of slaves to that auto, but we want to start to move towards a less car-dependent world. By doing so, we also want to maximize the use of existing infrastructure. We want to support vibrant city centers. That, that goes on to establishing local revenue. We want to create places where job startups could happen, where people could own their own business, could live in their own neighborhood and, and, and work in the same place. So we're trying to help with that housing jobs balance and it, it is, it is always a balance. Here, here is that site plan and like I said, it's gone through many iterations. The most recent was to take a really good look at any residential and de-emphasizing the size of those by breaking them into smaller and smaller buildings. And that, that's one of the things we've been doing over the past couple of months, since I think any of you have seen this, is really sort of breaking them down to match the, the massing and footprint size of the existing neighborhood. From a circulation standpoint, Councilmember, you're a hundred percent right, that is going to drive everything. This is a bit of a chicken before the egg. So all we're asking for tonight is authorization to go explore more studies. We're not asking for you to approve anything. We're not asking you, for you to support the project yet. We're asking for you to say, yes, go study it more and keep making it better. And that's what we want to do. We know that traffic will come mainly from Del Rio and one oh one and we want to incorporate that entry as soon as possible. And we want to be able to get people out and take, taking a left out of the project to back to that direction. What that exact form is, we're open to ideas. I think the traffic study itself will help dictate what that is. But everybody, staff, ourselves, Nick, we all agree that the closer the entry to one oh one, the better for, for commercial viability, for cohesion and keeping people out of the neighborhood. The worst it is though for traffic movement. So we're really, we're, we're playing a balancing act here. I will say that as you come into the project, it's really meant to be a large loop. And all of this is parking to help answer some of those questions. So this loop road that goes around the commercial, this is not strip commercial, this is not a Walmart center, this is not your standard nineteen eighties commercial. This is a destination, this is a place, this is a thing that can put Atascadero on the map. This is, I, I remember the economic study from ten years ago that talked about the, the retail leakage coming out of Atascadero. This is what gets not only our own residents to stay in town and spend their money in town, this is what can attract people from all over the place to come here to Atascadero. So I am really excited about this. I, I think what this retail center could be, it, you know, where you get Jobella coffee in the morning and Hush Harbor Bakery for breakfast and go back for a cocktail at night and a steak. This is something that, that I think many of us residences are, are yearning for and can really be a, a true destination. From there, the, the natural defining element of the creek helps us transition back into a more residential project. And from the residential, we're even transitioning as we reach the peripheral. We're excited to debate the best way to design the doors of which way they face on the street. I just don't think we're there yet. I think everybody would agree that we need to transition to the neighborhood from a more intense use along the freeway. This sort of shows a concept of what it may be like to be in some of this commercial. Tin City, Anaheim Packing House, we, we are working on Bonetti Ranch down in San Luis Obispo. These are visceral places, these are places beyond park right at the front door. It's a place where you can see the bread being made, you can see how, see the coffee roasters doing their work. You yourself could start your cupcake business. This is the kind of place that modern retail is shifting to. What exactly the architecture looks like, that we are, we are open to feedback on that. It is half-industrial, half-retail, so it, it needs to accommodate multiple functions. And then it's really that interstitial landscape in between that becomes the people spaces. You, you can grab your, your coffee inside and, and play beanbags outside. It's for kids, it's for families, it's for adults, it's, it's wonderful. We, Phil talked, I think, about both of the housing products. These are not fully vetted or fully designed. This is meant, meant more as a character rendition of what this, that this density doesn't have to mean a big, huge apartment building. That you can do smaller chunks and just more of them and still create a density that, that has enough to, to provide for honestly what your housing element. honestly, what your housing element says you need. Every, you know, I moved to Atascadero. Many people move here for large lots and, and the pristine bucolic nature of, of this area. More and more, I'm finding the young people at my work and, and sons and daughters who can't afford to live here because of size and costs on those larger lots. So finding what Phil put up earlier, which was an example of, of the missing middle, we call it. Housing that still feels appropriate for the setting, still feels derived from the land and derived from the neighborhood context. But more so, but provides more units and a smaller footprint. And that's where I think you'll see a lot of your housing developments going. I know RRM's proposed a couple with you in town that, that show those similar, similar things. So this is sort of the peripheral of the project, beyond San Ramon Road, that shows that smaller footprint. And in your packet ahead of time, I think you got this where we really, we broke down our apartment building and the average-sized home of Apple Valley and showed you how similar they were. And then we also broke down the sort of sprawling ranch with large motorhome-covered parking 30 feet tall and compared it to the townhome product as well. And what we found is that our footprints are very similar in nature. The height is also close in nature as well. I know when we talked to the mayor previously, that idea of three stories is where we start to get a little nervous. So we're trying to balance the, the density with, with how tall things are. Beyond that, we're really excited, I think, about this site. I think you're, again, going to your land use policy within your general plan. This is clearly identified as, while it is a single-family planned development area, these multifamily sites are little and few between. And the more opportunities you have for larger sites over two acres with slopes less than 10% on major collector frontage, these are the kinds of sites where you want to start to look for some more density in order to sort of limit that constant sprawling and growth outside. This is an internal site. This is an, an element of infill, if you will. This is from your housing element as presented to you in the last couple of months. You know, a lot of Atascadero is right here in the above moderate income, large lot, single family, single family. This is where we're trying, this is that missile, missing middle I was talking about, where we're trying to find those duplexes that can still offer homeownership, that can still get, you know, the dinks, the dual-income, no kids, a place to live, a starter home, and vice versa, where some of the seniors who can no longer maintain the pri, I've got a half acre here. I don't want to go weed tomorrow, but I have to. That gives them a move-down option as well without having to leave town because there's just not that available housing stock. In conjunction with that, the housing is not driving the project. The commercial's not driving the project. They work very well together. It is about jobs, housing balance, and it's hard to have one without the other. I think the neighbors would be just as grumpy about a large retail center right in their backyard as they would be about housing in their backyard. So that goes back to that sort of transitional aspect of, of what we're trying to create with this project. We do believe, and I included this in your package, I, I hope you had a chance to look at it, that this is right on target with many of your general plan policies from an economic incentive standpoint. I will say that this developer team is very seasoned and has done a lot of due diligence. They've looked in to the average household income and looked at some of the dollar, potential dollars captured by this sort of destination retail center. Again, this is not a strip center. This is not a bunch of drive-throughs. This is a place, this is something that people talk about for, for, throughout the state. And I think rivals places like Napa and others and can really help put Atascadero on a regional map and more. With that, we're, we're here to answer any questions. From a development standpoint, the applicant themselves are here as well. And Eric, I don't know if you wanted to actually say something, but I promised to be right about 10 minutes, and I think I'm there. So happy to answer any questions.
You're a little over, so we'll, we could get into questions. And before we do, I do want to remind any members of the public who are wishing to call in. We're going to go through questions of the applicant right now, but we are within that public comment period. So if you are wanting to comment on this item and you haven't emailed in yet, please do call in at 805-538-2888. Let me give that to you one more time, 805-538-2888, if you would like to comment on this item. So let's go ahead with any questions. Heather, go right ahead.
I don't have questions of the applicant. When we get a moment, I'd like to take a break.
Ah, yeah, that's.
Only room in our house that doesn't have AC, so it's about 100 degrees.
That's true. Let's see, let's see how quickly we go through these questions, and then that'll give people a chance to call in. We could take a break and then take the rest of public comment. How does that work for everyone? Okay, let me see. I've got to move. Oh, there we go. I couldn't see Susan. I've got something in her. There we go. All right, there we go. The panelist thing has moved. All right. I know Charles and Susan, you both had questions of the applicant?
Yes.
Susan, go right ahead.
Okay, so the, we talked about the extent to which this project is independent or synergistic or dependent on other development right in the area. Within the product, so comment on that if anything of that was mischaracterized. But in addition, within the project, to what extent is the success of the commercial area depending on the hotel being built first?
Well, my name's Eric. Thank you for having me, mayor and council. Hope you can see me. I was getting a sunburn when we started, and now I think I'm in the dark out here. But so we, we're not really worried about the Walmart property. Our, this project is a standalone project. You know, we looked all up and down from San Luis to Paso Robles, the whole entire corridor, and we handpicked Atascadero as what we think is the perfect spot for this destination type of product. And we are primarily hospitality and retail developers. There's always a little bit of mix of residential that ends up being intertwined in a lot of our mixed-use projects. And so, see, to directly answer your question, I, I think I could tell you that we see that when we cross the swale with the two big stone bridges, that there's no stopping what happens on the other side. So meaning the short-term rentals, the hotel, and all of that commercial experiential product have to be built at the same time. We can't, I certainly can't put a hotel at the far north in the middle of the dirt and expect people to get there. Also, we have, we have a huge amount of cost to bring the services across that and supply that side. So it, it makes sense for us to basically start on the far end and, and work our way through all of it kind of simultaneously. I know that none of our tenants and our new experiential restaurateurs and, and our ice cream maker want to be the only one there. So it sort of all has to happen simultaneously. And how I see the process, this is another question I'm answering at the same time that you asked, Susan, is we have to know that you, you want to accept an application because that's all we're here for tonight is to see if we're going to have an application. When the application gets accepted, the first thing we have to do is start our neighborhood meetings. We've done as much as we can with the neighbors and, and doing our due diligence in secret. So until we, we're a real project that has a chance to really get looked at. So we need to go immediately into neighborhood meetings and really fine-tune what that step-down product looks like to buffer. You know, the freeway and the commercial, that's obvious. But then, as Scott said, we need to step that down so that what's against the freeway doesn't affect the neighboring houses. And so that can only come out of intense meetings with the neighbors. The product that we talked about, which way it faces and walls, no walls, that, that'll all be worked out. But I do see that that's the first step, and then immediately into a traffic study. We've had for some time an offer to pay for the city to hire a traffic study to be able to analyze this, but it seems a little premature. It seems like we'd have to do a whole new one after we meet with all the, the neighbors. So it's sort of the cart before the horse. So the, the next step after approval to have an application is have meetings, then immediately check the design, then go for traffic studies. And the third question you asked, Susan, had to do with, well, a couple of you did. We would prefer just to join the Del Rio specific plan and add into that. We don't want to make, you know, we're here to do what is best for the city. It doesn't make sense for us to be the Lone Ranger out there trying to, you know, do our own thing. I, I wanted to start out talking, thanking Phil because I couldn't have done a better job. I, I think he's laid out the history and, and where we've come, and I really appreciate your work. I don't know if he's still on there, but thank you, Phil, and the other staff that's helped us over the course of the last year.
Great. You mentioned the short-term rental units being a key part of this. Could you talk a little bit about the business model you have in mind for them?
Okay, and someone raise your hand if, if my audio dies. These ear pods did not seem to want to make it through this entire session, so I'm, it's going in and out. So we saw, originally, we looked at this site up and down the area. We wanted to make the entire thing an entertainment destination venue, and we had two hotels planned. And in looking into it, they're just, it's just not the, the, the studies aren't showing that it can support that. And we love the Hilton, the Home Two Suites across the street. It's a brand I build all the time. We've built many of those. We love it. We think that that hotel is compatible with what we want to do. But we're looking at more of a boutique-style hotel, even though we're going to carry a national flag in order for people to get their loyalty points, but it's going to be boutique. You're not going to see another Home Two across the street. And that keeps in with the whole flavor of the entire center when we go more boutique. So what we said was, you know, we need the TOT tax. All of a sudden, we cut it in half of them. We want a hotel. So what can we do to offer another product that does make sense that, that is missing in the market? And so the less than 30-day short-term, you know, vacation rental, that came up. And our plan right now is that the, the ownership team, a number of them are on watching, is that we would handle that, that booking. We, you know, if we could own, keep all of them, then we would. But we would like the flexibility to be able to, you know, as the, as the math is happening, if we have to sell two or three or, or, you know, half the units while we keep the other half and book them, then we need, we need that flexibility to do that. But we see those always, we don't want to ruin the integrity of it if someone decides they want to not let anyone rent it out and just like hibernate there. I mean, obviously, they're breaking rules and we can't allow that. So these are short-term rentals, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that it's consistent and stays that way. So I don't know if that answers your question about the town.
Because it wasn't clear to me whether this was sort of a corporate apartment, a short-term apartment-type thing where people might. But this is, this is more a vacation venue than somebody who's going to be working for a three-month stint at Twin Cities and wants to live nearby. This is, this is.
Yeah, so.
Reunion, that kind of thing.
So the only way that we can qualify for the short-term rentals is less than 30 days. So it's not, that's out of the question, anything above 30 days. This is going to be more of a week. This is going to be three, four days. People are going to want to come for the events that are happening here. We see a lot of, we, with the experiential, the.
You just cut out.
Eric, we lost, we lost you.
Now we don't have any sound.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, we can.
All right, we've gone to microphone here on, okay, so the, you're going to see a lot of people like when we have a baker and a cheesemaker and ice cream shop. And everyone we've dealt with right now, even the, the gastro bistros that we talk about that are serving the, the local gourmet foods and the, and the beverages, they're doing tours. They want to have people come in there and see it made. So one of the things that we're laying into this, which allows for more people to want to stay there to experience all the parts of it, is that you get to see how everything's done and not just walk in and grab a drink or pick up your, your bread bowl or whatever it is that you're buying there. So it's, we think that the, the, the TOT tax version, so the hotel and all the short-term rentals just kind of goes hand-in-hand with the experiential retail that we're, we're dealing with, so that they, they go together.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. If, if in terms of managing the impact on the surrounding neighborhood of those kinds, those kinds of spaces, if in the future we put, there were a requirement that they be under common management or that there be a single onsite contact for the city to work with, to, for residents to deal with issues and for somebody to make sure that the party house stays within manageable levels of fun for, for all concerned, would you be comfortable with that comment, with that management requirement irrespective of diverse ownership?
So the short answer is yes. The expanded version is our plan is to hold as much of this as we can. We plan to manage the apartments. We plan to do bookings. We're, we've got a really exciting centrally-located clubhouse. It's open to more, to the community and not just the people that own the townhomes or that, that own one of the, if you're staying at the vacation rentals, you get to go there. The neighbor that's doing the little mini homes on the corner. The One Piece that we're not looking at developing, it's already planned. We're going to share a drive. And our deal with him is that we're looking for, really for him to be part of Beryl Creek. So the, the whole area is Beryl Creek. So we can't put up fences and block walls and separate things. The entire thing is the experience, including our neighbor, who is, in a sense, another TOT tax generating, could be a competitor. But if you look at his product, completely different than our short-term rental, completely different from our boutique hotel. And so we think that between the three of us, we have all the, the bases covered as far as the TOT tax, that, that traffic that's coming down the 101. So that central space has lots of green space. They have walking trails that spring out from it in every direction into the neighborhood, across the bridges. The bridges have both two-way traffic as well as walking bridge across them. And although we don't need a bridge, because this is not a Blue Line Creek, it's not, it's just a swale, we're going to emphasize that as well as the entire topography of the site. We're going to be overemphasizing and not flattening. So you're going to see a lot of height changes and, and depth, and it's really just going to be a great play. In fact, we've done the study and every single tree on the property we're keeping. I don't know. I'm excited about the whole thing. So I, I mean, I wish we could wave our hands around and, and start showing you some fly-through videos of what it's going to look like. But the first step is, obviously, we need to accept the application, so.
Sure. And do you have a, a sense of how many head-of-household level jobs you would be creating onsite within, you know, a large major of variability?
So I would assume that with the, with the early interest that we have, the owners of these companies or these small businesses that want to locate here would be considered head-of-household. I've not done the study, but I'm assuming if you're the owner of the business, you're probably also the breadwinner for that particular household. What we were more looking at is let's way outperform what the city's done with their jobs-to-housing ratio. And so this will be a little Mecca of, you know, completely the pendulum swinging the other direction. We're going to have so much more housing to the, or jobs to the housing than is in the entire city, that it's going to be kind of cool. It's almost a true live-work, although we don't, not a super fan setting up living above where you're working necessary, but next to it, like we've designed, we love. And we, we see that as not degrading like some other live-work scenarios have in other, other cities, so.
Yeah, and the, the, the idea that the business owner and the janitor can both walk to work, you know, in the same neighborhood and have accommodations that are appropriate to each and, and that can be managed. can be managed and affordable, you know, that's really a great positive. Okay. Let me, I'm just checking my notes here.
You did mention the garages, and I don't know if we would be out of line, but we would certainly be open to not allowing garages to change. We would hate to see the product that we've designed and are going to approve together be degraded by people doing conversions. And so we are certainly wide open to putting in this project, Beryl Creek, putting some requirements that are specific. I don't know if it's a CCNRs, what do you want to call it? But we certainly don't want to see people start converting their garages and parking out in the street. You know, I heard some comments made, but, you know, we'll have to talk about that in the process.
Eric, it wouldn't actually be CCNRs. You would have no jurisdiction over this state legislation. So the state has basically said this is allowable, so we need to look at what can be done in the project. And I think Phil had some ideas with that so that we don't end up with a bunch of junior ADU conversions in your project.
Right. And I think that, you know, for the benefit of folks, you know, the purpose of that state thing is to make sure that we are moving forward in all kinds of ways to improve the volume of housing stock. And in this, but in this kind of project where you're starting from naked ground, the point is to design that in from the get-go, to have the units, the greater density that you're seeking to be something that's managed and designed, baked into the thing so that you don't have to then add yet another layer of make-work thing to, in order to create enough of housing. So I have no problem with designing a way to avoid that requirement into the project because we're also, at the same time, I see the intent to design opportunities for affordable units at a variety of levels. And we certainly do want to see that component be part of this site.
Any other questions?
Let me just say, thanks for putting forward these wonderful ideas.
My pleasure.
Mayor, Mayor Pretend Borbo, any questions from you?
Actually, a couple of them were mostly addressed by the questions Councilmember Fong asked. So I'll just have one and then I'll wait, you know, after we hear the rest of the public comment. On your presentation on Slide 10, Town Home Sketch, I'm just curious, I'm assuming that that image with the people walking on the sidewalk and then, you know, a roadway, a very shimmery roadway there, that is an interior road as drawn or is that a, I mean, it could go either way, but I'm just wondering how you visualize that. Is that an interior road or is that Del Rio or San Ramon?
That was intended to be more like San Ramon. And as Eric said, we had this vision of overwhelming amount of graphics and, but I just don't, nothing's designed done yet and we just didn't want to go too far. I think on San Ramon and the perimeter, I think Phil mentioned it, there's a, there's a level of landscaping and setback that's more important than internal to the project. I think emphasis on sidewalks and curb and gutter right at a driveway can happen more internally, but out on the peripheral of the project, we think having a parkway, a place for trees, a place for natural landscaping, LID treatments, then a sidewalk, then another yard area for setback helps provide that sort of transitional element. So that was more intended to be along San.
And this is an area I'm assuming, you know, you will address with the neighbors, particularly on San Ramon, as, you know, they're the most impacted folks here in this thing. And I was glad to hear you wanted, you know, you're going to jump right into neighborhood meetings if this goes to the next step because, you know, I'd hope you would look at each thing in terms of what can you do to mitigate impacts or what can you do that would benefit them, like fixing the flooding that happens in San Ramon. I, when we're not sheltering a place, I drive Del Rio every day and I drove San Ramon to Home Depot this morning. And so I'm very familiar with the area. And there's flooding there that you could fix, for example, which would be a benefit to the neighbors. So I want that to be a focus and I'm hoping, I'm assuming you're willing to do that sort of thing, is what can you do to mitigate impact on the neighbors, one thing, and perhaps even benefit the neighbors in some way? And take their input.
Do you complete?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just, just two questions. One, are you planning on keeping ownership of both the commercial and the residential or is the potential there that you would be selling the residential for someone else to develop and you would be sticking with the commercial?
The intention right now is that we usually joint venture with guys that are expert in the product. So once the product's 100% defined through this process, we're hoping to do, then that's normally how we would do it. The, so the commercial buildings, we, so we have an opportunity here for anyone to either own or be a tenant or be a joint tenant if they're a smaller user inside one of the larger buildings. So it, there's going to be a mix. We, and right now, we have a mix of interest. Some people want to own, they want to make, I mean, they're using words like this will be our flagship. And when I say this, I'm talking about boutique-style users. We're not, you know, we don't care about the Costco's and the Starbucks of the world. We're looking.
Right, Dafkin Robbins isn't coming in. I think what I was getting at is, and you've heard us allude to it a bit and Phil certainly talked about it, is we don't want to see somebody come in and build up all the residential and then the commercial just sort of languishes. And we would want to make sure that we have protections in place so that that doesn't happen. And so that was my, my question is that if the residential ends up being purchased by someone or developed by someone entirely different than the commercial piece of it and we have any requirements in place where commercial needs to go first or some sort of phasing like Phil had referenced, there's always that potential of that residential person saying, hey, you're holding me up over here and we start getting into, you know, and granted, we can have it in writing, but then we start creating friction and so I, that's why, that's why I'm asking a question.
So if I could say, I mean, it's just my word, and I'm guessing right now, I would say we would be looking immediately at the commercial. And, and I wouldn't have had this conversation if COVID hadn't happened, but the new normal, we don't know. If this is a V-curve coming out of this or a U, I don't know. So starting with hotel at the same time, you know, that may be six months behind the commercial.
And I'm considering hotel commercial. What I really, I mean, personally, what I'm concerned about is the townhomes and the apartments build up and the rest of it is vacant. We've seen this happen before, so we're a little gun-shy. So that's the, that's what the genesis, that's what's driving my question.
So the short-term rental townhomes, they're still townhomes, those would go right away. That, basically, everything up on the commercial side, we're looking to go first. And I would say that if it goes the way I want to do it and are my partners, is we're holding the apartments and so we would start developing those as well. Now whether the, I don't know, the perimeter around the apartments, then additionally buffer the neighborhood, if those are last, if those happen simultaneously while we're working on apartments or not, but I'm definitely, our focus is to make sure that the commercial is viable and all done with the right amount of synergy, meaning we got to have all of it going at the same time. We don't want to have, you know, two people out there, you're not going to get the same feeling.
No, totally, totally understand that. So I just want to make sure that you understand the direction we might be going of doing what we can to ensure that commercial, and when I say commercial, I mean that whole, that whole piece, the hotel, the maker spaces, the short-term rentals, all of that, that the focus is there first or phased in some way that we don't end up with just residential and no commercial. So we'll get to that, but I just want you to be clear on why we would be pressing in that way. My last question is that, do you see, how do you see navigating or maybe just me saying, I think this would be important, that when people are pulling in from Del Rio to go to the commercial segment, they'll be bypassing the residential and just making sure there's, you know, precautions in place that, you know, people are slowing down because you're going to have apartments and families there and kind of hard to tell where all of that is, but it could be a safety issue just from a residential standpoint.
So we're not going to be bypassing any existing residential, okay? So there is a grand entrance, not at the residential, but it, across the street from city-owned property in the corner. And we would be entering there through a very wide, grand, tree-lined, Butford Road that takes you all the way up. You have to choose to swing a left and go into the housing development or the apartments. So you're basically going to be directed up to the commercial and across one of two bridges. And so it's designed specifically to mitigate some of the things that I've heard talked about.
Okay. Yeah, it was hard to see that in the picture, so thank you for that. All right, I think, let's go ahead and take that break. I want to remind any attendees, we will go, when we come back, we'll take about a, let's say a seven-minute break. It's 8:28 right now. We'll come back at 8:35. Anyone who is not already on the line and would like to, please call in at 805-538-2888. Again, 805-538-2888 for public comment and we'll see you back in seven minutes. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yay. So if we all took a break, were we all going to disappear? And sorry about that, Heather, I probably should have done that earlier. I was kind of gotten in this mode, I thought, oh, we'll go. And then 25 minutes later, so I should have been, I should have thought of that a little better for you.
Sorry, I had to cut out earlier to get the cord from my computer because it said battery low.
Start rethinking where we position for council meetings for hours on end. I'm definitely, chair next.
I know, I wouldn't mind a standing chair right now, for sure. All right.
Applicants can see us all. I mean, it's one thing to expose ourselves to each other, you know, stretching the.
And all of you are eating, like, what do you have? Like, I feel left out.
I had halibut tacos for dinner, but I do.
I got my giant bag of heater popcorn from Galaxy.
That is a bad idea. I followed you and got a bag of that. And I'm like, oh, no. I'm having.
That's hilarious.
Girl Scout cookies and milk. Sorry.
So, hey, let me check and see, Luke, are you here? Can we start back up?
Yep, we're ready.
All right. All right, so we are back from our break and we are currently on Item B1, the Beryl Creek proposed development. We're not approving a development tonight, we're looking at a concept and saying whether or not we want to give approval to the applicant to move forward with creating a more of a specific details and a specific plan and pulling this all together, the neighborhood outreach and all of that. So that's what we're here to do tonight. And with public comment open, I will go to that and ask first, Luke, do we have any callers who wish to speak on this item? And again, if you haven't yet called in, the number is 805-538-2888. That's 805-538-2888. So I will ask Luke if we have anyone on the line to speak.
Yes, we have quite a few callers.
Okay.
First up is Jeff and Barbara Warren. First up is Jeff and Barbara Warren.
All right. And just to let every, each speaker know, as you come up, you will have three minutes, and you probably cannot see your own timer, so I'll let you know when your, when your time is up. Mr. and Mrs. Warren.
My thought when I called was to get more information about the design, the number of residential units, what the commercial was supposed to look like, and all those sorts of things. Many of those things have been answered in concept, because that's what I continue to hear. So mostly I have comments that this is just the beginning stages, it's conceptual, we have not had any kind of neighborhood input, and which I feel very strongly we need to have. My first impression is we've got a lot of residential there, going from one-acre minimums to what looked like a hundred, you know, 80 apartments and 50 townhomes, so 130 units, where before it's maybe 10 or 20 or something like that. So Barbara?
My, one of my big concerns is the height of the apartments, that they will be looking into people's backyards and across the street at people's yards. Somebody mentioned, somebody had a 30-foot garage. Well, that's a lot different, because nobody's living there, looking into somebody else's yard. And the other concern is on, I think all, everybody that's involved in this needs to drive from San Ramon to Home Depot. That is an exit people will be using down at the San Ramon/Santa Cruz exit, coming to that facility, because it's another way to come. That's a very narrow, windy, little bit hilly, and very bad repair road. And I don't know how the city council will ever be able to address that. So, the height of the apartments, the density of the housing as compared to what it was zoned, is just huge. Not happy. That's my comment.
All right. Thank you both, we appreciate it. Luke, you want to bring on our next speaker? Oh, did we, before you do, did we lose Susan? Did we lose Councilmember Funk?
It looks like it, I don't see her.
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've been listening the whole time. Apparently my webcam went off for some reason.
Okay, oh, good. All righty, Luke, could you bring on our next speaker?
Yes, up next, we have, let me see, we have Alana Reynolds. Let me bring her up right now. Let me set the timer.
Hello, thank you very much. I am in support of this. I really appreciate all the questions everybody had, the explanations from everybody, it was very, very good. When I go to a community, I really want to be able to pull up on the side of the road, find restaurants, find hotels. This long stretch is perfect for commercial. I was in Atascadero, living for over 22 years, and when Dove Creek was built, which was, I live near, I was really surprised, because it's homes right against the freeway. That's where we need to have hotels and businesses, so that Atascadero doesn't go dead. So I think that having that as commercial is excellent. I do have experience with short-term vacation rental, and my one little concern there is making sure that it's not next to residential, because real orientation area, and people come, and they will be a little louder than the people who know hotel rooms, and you've got to expect that. They're here to enjoy, and then on vacation. So I would make sure that when you do that designing, maybe they can, you know, like, front Del Rio or something like that, but definitely not against the other residential. So I'm in support of that land. I think there's been cows out there mostly, but I think that having that be commercial is brilliant, and then the area that was going to be Walmart is certainly a part of the package. The, another concern came up with all the residential and the density, and I do think that's really important for San Ramon with all the homes, so really considering that carefully, I think is a very good idea. I lived in San Luis for 12 years, and they stopped a lot of the garage conversions, because there was a requirement to have a garage. So if, and I don't know if it has to be a city ordinance, but if there's an ordinance that says you have to have a garage in a home for any new building, then those garages couldn't be converted. ADU would be a whole nother story if it was a tiny home in a backyard, but I believe that is one way to have garages not be converted, is if you're required to have a garage. So that just popped into my head as I was listening to you guys talk at the end. That's it. Traffic is the one thing, but as far as having commercial, it is an exact area, it is exactly what, what the area needs for commercial. I like it that it's an entryway into Templeton, I mean, from Templeton into Atascadero, and I think that the city of Atascadero will, will be benefit from it. And the neighbors, many of them have a couple acres, so there is some leeway in there. So thank you very much, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Luke, could you bring on our next speaker?
Yes, next, we have Jan Beulie.
Yes, hello, this is... Sorry, how do I turn this off?
Mute your computer audio there.
All right. Can you hear me now? This is Jan Beulie, Century 21 Hometown Realty.
It's very hard to hear you.
That's because my phone is causing this reverb, but I had to call...
Um, Ms. Beulie, you've got a, you've got a, like, an echo or something, and you're kind of coming in and out, it's, it's very difficult to understand you at all.
It's coming from my phone. Is this better?
Yes. Better, there's still an echo, but it's better.
All right, I'm going to back away from the computer. My name is Jan Beulie, Century 21 Hometown Realty. I represent the seller of the property. I wanted to answer or address a question that Mayor Pro Sam Barrow had. He had, if you look at page 43 of the packet, you will see that the two northern properties on San Ramon Road inside the Urban Services Line are in favor of this project, and I just wanted the council to know that. They are my clients, and I represent them. So that would be the Knutsam property and the Thomas property. Are you seeing that? Are you understanding what I'm saying?
Yeah, we're, we're listening, go ahead.
That's all I had to say.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Beulie.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Luke, you want to bring on our next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Garrett Cruz.
Hi, good evening, thank you all, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Yeah, my name is Garrett Cruz, I'm the lead pastor of Legacy Church, formerly Atascadero First Assembly. We are the current owners of the Del Rio property that we've been discussing tonight. As a pastor, let me just briefly say, we are praying for you all, and I really deeply appreciate your work. You know, as, as a pastor, I've been trying to navigate, you know, my little congregation of a few hundred, and you all, if you will, have a congregation of 10,000 that you're trying to keep safe and healthy and hopeful. So all to say, I know you all carry a tremendous weight, and I really am deeply appreciative of every single one of you. As, as a citizen of Atascadero, I moved up here nearly 10 years ago, got married, started a family, my wife and I, we have three kids, we love Atascadero, it really is such an incredible place to live. We love our parks, we love our local businesses, but, you know, oftentimes, especially on nights like these where the weather's great, we'll want to hang out, have dinner, we'll, we'll travel outside of Atascadero, we'll go to Paso, we'll go to San Luis Obispo. But I think the incredible thing about this plan is that, you know, our, our weekly plans, our date nights, I mean, this is going to completely change our city, not just our lives, but our city for the better. This will be, make Atascadero the go-to place to be. And I, I think Scott, the architect, earlier had talked about kind of economic leaking, I forget the particular verbage he used, where, you know, people are leaving our city for shopping and nightlife and dining, et cetera. And I, I know with this proposed plan, I mean, it's going to make everything flip, it's going to make Barrel Creek the absolute place to be. And I'm just really excited about that. And I'll, I'll end with this, that as, as a pastor, the idea of legacy, it's really important to me, it's important to the members of our church, you know, we have a kind of multi-generational vision to impact our community, and I really think that Barrel Creek, this, this plan that we're talking about, has a huge impact on our legacy in Atascadero. I mean, I, I believe it's going to be the place where generations will enjoy, you know, our city, where memories will be made, where I want to take my grandkids to, where, you know, every time we drive down the 101, we see this incredibly inviting place where life is happening and our community is thriving. And again, I'm just really excited about this plan, I really hope this plan could move forward, and if it does, the Cruz family will be first in line when Barrel Creek opens up. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Luke, do we have another, our next speaker?
Yes, we have Kristen Feeble.
Thank you, Ms. Feeble.
Hello. Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can, just fine.
Yeah, so, perfect. So I am a longtime Atascadero girl, graduated from Atascadero High School, I attended Atascadero First Assembly, I've been on the church board there, I was on the church board, and in that church, the time we purchased property on Del Rio Road. My husband currently runs the food pantry on that location. And I, I need to say that we are just so excited about this, the opportunity for this to become really the gateway into Atascadero. I mean, I, I bleed orange and gray, I am an Atascadero person, and it's important to me to see jobs, to see a place where people want to come. It's always been to me, my place, and Atascadero First Assembly, a legacy church now, has always been my place. And so this for us is, is a great opportunity for our community. As a, as a businesswoman, I travel probably three or four days a week normally, not during COVID, obviously, but normally I'm on the road a lot, and this is the exact kind of location that I search for when I am on the road, looking for a place to stay, somewhere where I can be in the community, where I can feel the vibe of the community, and I can get out and enjoy a little bit of where I'm visiting. So I feel like this is going to be great for Atascadero, I feel like it's going to be great, obviously, like, like Garrett said, for the legacy of our church, the vision that we had. We had vision when we purchased the property, certainly that's changed, and it, and this is a little bit different than what we thought, but we're really excited about it, and excited about the opportunity. And my husband, like I said, runs the food pantry that exists on that property, and he's also very involved and supportive of, of this change, and what that could mean for, even for the expansion of our food pantry onto another place. So that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Feeble. Luke, do we have someone else to speak?
Next up, we have Bill and Judy Schaefer.
Welcome, Mr. and Mrs. Schaefer. Hello.
Yes, hello. We're interested in the development, I have enjoyed the presentation, my wife and I have both enjoyed the presentation, there's a lot of information that's come forth that's very detailed, well-thought-out. I'd like to go back in time maybe a little bit, we've been here about 15 years, and before we purchased the property here, we spent some time with the city, trying to discern what the general plan looked like, and what to expect in terms of our, our future that might unfold on San Ramon Road if we were to buy the property. And based on that, and the integrity that we thought existed with the general plan, we understand that general plans have modifications, but we felt that that was a, a good view of what we might have to expect as far as establishing a future here. And so fast forward through the years, there's been development, issues, as everyone listening probably understands, with regard to different projects in the area. And as we approach this one now, I, I have to say that we, we both are really fairly shocked, and it isn't because we're not informed with some of the things that are starting to happen, but it's the, the logic maybe and why they're happening. From my perspective, and again, I, I'm deeply involved with city and issues other than general, listening to what's going on, I've heard a lot about the need for developing commercial, and I respect that, I think that's a very big component to any city. Constantly I hear, we have too much residential, and we don't have enough commercial, and we need something to pay the bills and have a little bit better budget stability. So as I look at this project, and I'm looking at the maps, I'm, I'm taken with, I think one of the issues that has come out of maybe the staff report as well, is that there's six parcels that would be replaced with this project, and on that six parcels, there would be, if we used an average of three people per, that would be 18 people. I did a quick math, I'm not real good at math, or calculating things well, but I come up with about 460 people on, on this acreage, if you take into account the various structures that are spoken to, and used average numbers of residents, and that would include also the tiny, tiny village allowing some of that, but from that. But if you just stop for a moment and look at what that really feels like, or looks like, or the impact of that, it doesn't happen on one day, it goes on for the future, you've got, for to call it 450 people, where there might have been logically expected to be 16 or 18 people. So I would ask the council to consider these issues, I know that once we get a ball running, it's hard to look to the side much, but in my view, it would be a perfect project if you were to just clip off the bottom leg of it and create a commercial zone, which I think is appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Schaefer, you're at three minutes, if you, if you have one last sentence you want to get in there, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, well, it won't be my last, but...
Yeah, there'll be plenty, plenty more time, so...
Yeah, right. So, so I think, I think just looking at the project, it sounds like it's contingent upon the residential for viability, and I would say that right now is a really dangerous time to make this decision by the council, because we have a lot of economics that are up in the air, and we don't want to be saddled with a property that's tied up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Luke, do we have, do we have further public comment?
Yes, next, we have Jeff Oslin.
Good evening again, Mr. Oslin.
Good evening, once again, council. The project, I think, is a fabulous idea. I have seen projects like this on the East Coast, and they are pretty remarkable. The concerns, of course, being I live in this area, is traffic, and San Ramon being a back way in, and Del Rio being a major thoroughfare. The only concern that I have is additional traffic and how we mitigate that. So I think that going forward on the project, at least giving the green light is probably good, we don't know how COVID-19 is going to affect things, but in this consideration and the neighborhood meetings, maybe they can explain the traffic a little bit more, and we can address it as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke, do we have more speakers?
Those are all the call-in speakers we have.
Okay. And I will ask Rochelle, are there any comments? Okay and I will ask Rochelle are there any comments received by email to be read into the record?
Yes we have uh three comments to be read into the record uh
And do you need the the three-minute timer Rochelle or do you have that on your end?
Yes if I could.
Okay can you can you see it that Luke has it?
Yes I can.
Okay.
Okay the first is from Daryl Wisnand uh he states I live in Apple Valley off Del Rio Road I believe we as homeowners in this area deserve to maintain that area development in a way that fits with the area we expected as it was zoned when we bought our house I am concerned with the high density residential development being proposed for the area northwest of the 101 Del Rio intersection I am totally opposed to the RV hotel right on Del Rio Road the potential for degrading of a facility like that are huge our area is mostly rural and low-density housing in this facility does not fit with our area at all especially in that location I am also concerned with the Barrel Creek general plan is the residential low-density or apartments apartments don't fit with the area what kind of commercial development is planned does it fit with the existing residential properties around it the roundabout is now going to be built right behind the fences of the homes in the Apple Valley subdivision I understand development on that property I just want it development that fits with the rural and lower-density housing of our area thank you that was from Daryl Wisnand. Uh the next one I have is from Madeline Rothman and she says my name is Madeline Rothman and my husband and I have lived at 1660 San Ramon Road in Atascadero for the past forty-eight years we chose to live in this northern part of town because of its rural character low-density privacy and the beautiful natural environment which includes the sensitive environment of Graves Creek that runs behind our San Ramon property when we moved to the San Ramon Road in nineteen seventy-two there were steelhead trout in Graves Creek and beavers that thrived at the creek little by little we have seen that the steady erosion of that precious environment due to increased development sadly those days of seeing trout and beavers in the creek along with the other native species of plants and animals are gone forever San Ramon Road has always been a neighborhood of families who care about each other our neighborhood has a long history of families raising their children here and some of their children raising their children on this street San Ramon Road is its own community of families made up of long-term residents who have joined with newcomers on the street all of who value the rural ambiance and low-density of this original section of San Ramon Road together with our neighbors on San Ramon Road we are strongly opposed to a general plan amendment to change the zoning of an area that is currently zoned for maximum of six single-family dwellings to zoning that would allow a project with fifty-two townhomes eighty apartments retail light industrial space with multiple buildings and a hundred and twenty-room hotel with sixteen detached short-term rental units if this project were to go ahead it would cause a major change to our neighborhood and must probably the loss of a long-time neighborhood community loss of the rural character of the area greater erosion of the precious natural environment of Graves Creek and the surrounding area and loss of the value quality of life that brought families to this street it is great greatly saddened me to see a proposal such as this one that would erode another part of the rural beautiful rural character that was once plentiful in Atascadero once you take away a beautiful special piece of a rural Atascadero found on San Ramon Road and change it to a high-density living units retail light industrial multiple buildings a hotel and more the environment is changed forever so much is lost forever I ask that city council give serious consideration before making any changes to the general plan that would affect our much-loved San Ramon neighborhood there is a priceless value to preserving the beautiful rural environment that drew us here preserving and protecting the very special and sensitive areas surrounding Graves Creek and preserving the quality of life that is enjoyed by a neighborhood of San Ramon Road families and that was from uh sorry.
I think you said Madeline Rothman.
Yes okay and the last one I have is from Lee Perkins um Ms Perkins states hello city council members I understand you will be considering the issues of a potential major development between San Ramon and US 101 tonight please consider the following in your deliberations include walking and bike paths include recreational areas for small children and at least elementary a small park-like setting we could always use another soccer field plenty of parking the hundred and twenty-bed hotel seems large for this project I would be more in favor of less rooms such as a boutique boutique hotel style keep chains out and give space to entrepreneurs since Walmart land has not been sold as promised a large development there needs to be considered into relation to what is proposed at San Ramon and US 101 among many other tra- things traffic and last provide low-income affordable housing in the development a must young families ought to be able to buy housing in Atascadero and those were the comments that we received by email if the mayor will bear with me for one moment I will check the city clerk's email make sure nothing came in.
Sure thing.
Uh we have nothing new that arrived.
Okay and I will ask one more time uh Luke is there any other member of the public that's called in?
No there has not been.
Okay thank you I will go ahead and close public comment period and just to address a few of these what I think um some of the speakers were saying you know clearly there are some saying hey this is really going to change our rural environment and some serious consideration needs to be given here not thinking this is a great idea and you know other folks of course saying you know hey this is just the right thing and what what really the next step is tonight we are not approving a general plan amendment we are not approving a project uh we're nowhere close to that right now um all the four of us currently are doing is saying do we want to move forward to see if this is viable do we want to say move forward on looking at doing a general plan amendment start getting into the details but number one and this is brought up by uh Mr and Mrs Warren uh the neighborhood input that is for all of us incredibly important and when I say all of us I mean the entire city staff city council um it is key for us that the the applicant reach out to the neighborhood um they have assured us that that is their their next step after this process um we let's see I'm just going to kind of go through some of the notes that I took here um you know things like the height of the apartments looking into people's backyards those kinds of things will be looked at in this process um the use of San Ramon again something we've talked about looking into um Ms Reynolds did bring up the garage or if a garage hasn't if you have an ordinance for that it can't be converted and what folks are unfamiliar with is brand-new legislation from the state that says doesn't matter what you have in place this takes precedence so um anyone living in a multifamily uh unit and I'm assuming other than multifamily as well can convert a garage into um I think the twenty percent was the limit so multifamily that is already designated I mean just by building as being somewhat affordable um by design um they are basically saying that up to twenty percent of those units can be converted without replacing parking and there's nothing to be said about that so I just want to to reiterate that that's not an option that um either council or the applicant would have to be able to change she also asked about the short-term vacation rentals recommending they not be next to residential if you look at the plan the the there's a nice buffer between the commercial and the residential that that would be planned uh let's see any other you know obviously mitigating traffic um and you know Mr and Mrs Schaefer did bring up you know why so much residential and it and and I think he ended with saying I I think it's the viability to project and it really is and I know the applicant could speak to that more uh and then lastly Ms Perkins you know talked about you know boutique environment not having a bunch of chains and and I know she sent that in earlier so she may be listening tonight and hear that you know the applicant is certainly going in that direction uh their their goal is not to have the the Starbucks not there's anything wrong with Starbucks but they're not looking at having the Starbucks and the the chains and things like that they want the unique um I'll say he had me at Jobella so those are the kind of things we're looking at the Hush Harbors and those fun things so I think um I think that covers everything and so now it's uh up to the four of us to um kind of deliberate and 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 see where we want to go giving Phil some some feedback here um I I think the the sense I get is we we want to move forward with this we think there's a lot of possibility here I think Mayor Pro Tim Borbeau has said it well when when he said that this is a big shift um one of the app one of the members of the public said you know the environment would be changed forever and that's true um change can also be a good thing it can mean a loss of some things but it can also mean a good thing uh but in making that change there certainly has to be a benefit to the neighborhood there needs to be um an appropriate trade-off uh so that that there is a benefit all around and so that's something that certainly needs to be looked at as we go through this process um I would direct council to pages fifty-four and fifty-five of the staff report uh at the bottom uh council feedback at the bottom of page fifty-four and this is where uh Phil really needs to hear from us so um Director I would ask you would it be best if we kind of went section by section like you know A B C all the way through G and just we got some general input on each of those would that be the easiest way to go about it?
We could yes do that thank you mayor or we could refer to a slide I have that was a summary of topics that was slide thirty-four my presentation if I put that back up I'd be a simpler way to um have everyone look at the same thing but whichever you prefer.
I go ahead and put up the slide that works for me.
Try that see if I can get this to work again let's see.
Slide would be good because the public can see that then follow along better.
Yes.
Very true.
All right can you see that screen now?
Perfect.
Good. And then I'll allow you to uh go ahead and go through that and if you have questions I'm here to guide you along about that.
Okay so for in regards to the general patent general plan specific plan is that back on page forty-six where we're looking at option one and two um in addition to saying I mean I think we would all agree that we want this as part of the Del Rio specific plan if I can get some head nods we're all in agreement on that yeah we're all in agreement on this being part of the Del Rio specific plan option one and two um I understand there's some some nuances there I would like to I don't want to delve down into the details I think what I would like to say is whatever whatever you would say gives us the maximum safeguards for commercial to move forward in the way that we want to see it rather than hey residential and then commercial doesn't get built I mean Phil I think you know our concern and so whatever gives us the maximum assurance that you know whether there's a phased approach as you get into this uh but I think we really want to um to ensure that that commercial goes forward and we don't end up with a bunch of residential and then a vacant spot.
Yeah.
Okay is there anything further on that that anyone wants to add?
Um I would add in in general you know we've asked questions of the applicant as to what is their intent and we it and of course we're concerned about maintaining um proper leverage if you will to ensure kind of phased development we'd like to see and that is to see the commercial without seeing a bunch of residential without the commercial happening one thing we need to remember is I I think the city made an error in dealing with Walmart in the sense that we got so excited about having a Walmart that we forgot that what we're really doing is entitling a piece of property and so regardless of how good we might feel about this developer their willingness to do certain things or have certain stated plans uh if if you know we go to the next step and then somewhere down there will be ultimately approve this we're approving a piece of property we need to be very careful what we do because we have to do it without regards as to who the owner is because the owner could change they could get it all approved and sell you know they could start building it and have financial problems and sell and so we have to be very careful not to get too focused on who the developer is and you know what their statements and intents are I mean they're they're good to know for planning but we need to be careful.
Very well said Phil I mean Phil oh very well said Charles Phil does that give you sufficient direction?
Yes yes we don't need to get into exquisite number of details on that I think uh there's so many options you can go with with specific plans general plan I think staff and I think the applicant are just looking for hey what are the big concerns and we can come up with a design in terms of zoning and general plan designations that get us there.
Yep did you have something to ask Susan?
Yeah I just just reinforce that point to to our applicant to make that we are all we are shoulder to shoulder all committed to seeing that the the commercial develops first or develops in tandem with the residential and that you don't see that because we understand that residential is valuable to the viability of the project and its cash flow and we don't want to see oh let's get all that cash flow first and then you break off and say well it's only the commercial is only viable with residential so you've got to chop off another piece of the commercial as residential and pretty soon you just have um a major contribution to our jobs housing imbalance again so we're glad that you're in alignment with us and that that this is not going to be problematic for for you from what we hear and uh we'll trust and verify.
Beautiful all right on to number two residential design and density um and and again we don't want to we don't need to get down into details here I think um you know some of some of this like the orientation of the homes and the design is going to be driven by input from the public um and what the what the neighbors want to see um I was it the pictures I saw were not were not bad uh but I would say the townhomes like if you just start getting those stacked next to each other they look they can start to look a little cookie cutter and just keeping in mind that we don't we don't want that kind of a look so how do we you know make sure that we we keep it that um I know eclectic when you're building a new a new development isn't the right term uh but that we have some differentiation and it doesn't just look like the same townhome lining San Ramon and and Del Rio and whether it goes inside or outside I think again that will be part of the the developer and the and the residents kind of working together um yeah Susan.
Yeah I concur with the mayor's comments and uh would would add also that the decision criteria you know on these things uh should be about how this engages with the neighborhood listening to what the neighbors have to say about it particularly those neighbors on San Ramon who will be most affected by the project um and second concern for the safety of the new residents that will be living there um I have concerns about um having open yard concepts in a multi-generational community um that you know that are open to roads that are going to carry a lot of traffic in and out of this commercial space um and so I just ask that attention be given to the safety of the residence as well as to its engagement with the neighborhood.
I think the garage requirement uh is something that I feel strongly about and it sounds like the applicant does too once um he heard what could be possible and so I think Phil just in working with the applicant on how do you change that so that you don't end up with a large number of you know parcels where the garage would be converted and then we would end up with a with a problem a parking problem that would be you know it could be significant.
Yes I think we can explore some solutions on that I have some ideas possibly just need to check with some of our colleagues in legal and and see how we can design a project where we know we have safeguards in place.
Okay.
I think that that would be some reassurance for the for like for the neighbors on San Ramon also that in and in Apple Valley that this this that it's going to be whatever's going to development there is going to be the intended development and it's not going to spiral out um in all kinds of other improvisational ways.
Um what are some of my colleagues um what are your thoughts on the overall density right now?
Well I think it's a huge you know it's obviously a huge increase in density and so that's why you know it's a big ask um you know I I guess maybe I'm easily impressed with some of these drawings um you know I think they can make it attractive I I'm just most concerned about how it plays out for the existing residents on San Ramon I think you know you can orient the homes either way on Del Rio would probably work I'd be inclined
I'd be inclined to have it, you know, that be the backside and have the houses front on the inside. But, I mean, that can be done either way. But the San Ramon piece, that density on the San Ramon side is, would be the place where I'd have some concern about, about density. And of course, you know, generates traffic as well, but that's a whole separate issue to talk about down, down the slide here. But I, I mean, I can live with that level of density, especially if it generates some affordable, but I'm most concerned about the impact on, of course, the San Ramon side.
And I certainly don't think we would want to see any more than this. I mean, this is the, this is the absolute top of the, top of the line in terms of density. I think we'd all like to see lower, but yet we also understand the economic viability of the entire project. Heather, did you have something to add?
Yes, having met with the applicant, you know, we've asked that they decrease the density. So I see that they have accommodated that. I do want to make sure that it's complementary to the community and that the other residents aren't worried about like the apartments being able to see directly into their homes. You know, some of the similar concerns we had on another project down on El Camino, the residents, we want to make sure the existing residents are being contacted, that there's outreach, that they're having some influence on this development because it is their community just as much as it is ours, but they every day will wake up and see it. And I think it's important to tie them into this process, but also knowing what the developer and architects have been willing to do and have done already this far through the project shows that they're willing to work on this to make it a viable project, going to task it out, but one that stands out for other communities too. So I'm happy that we're considering it. I think that there are still so many different things that still need to be worked out. And going forward, I think this is the starting point.
Yeah, and I think that density-wise, I don't want to see, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll take out all the affordable housing units and then we can have less density. No, the affordable housing needs to be a part of this community. It needs to serve a variety of income levels in a, in a neighborhood. And I want to see a density be done in a way that allows for good use, good communal spaces. And to me, that if you're, if you design an effective community, you design the traffic flow in a way that doesn't cream the surrounding neighborhood, you can create something that is a real asset. And those considerations should govern what density can be accommodated, understanding that people are also looking at the bottom line of needing to have enough density on the property to make it fly financially. But I, but I really think that the, you know, to set a number higher or lower at this point is, is artificial. It is making it, making sure that the concerns are addressed.
And I do echo Councilmember Newsom's comments of having met with the applicant and reducing that density and some of the height and the mass that we were seeing. And so I do appreciate the steps they've taken already. And so just kind of knowing that we're, we're sort of at that maximum, but then how do you make this fit with the, with the design of the neighborhood? Phil, does that give enough direction? Have we been straightforward enough with you?
Yes.
Okay. So now we'll move on to types of commercial uses. And I think that the biggest thing that we've really talked about, that we want to make sure those 16 units, that there is safeguard, that those are short-term, meaning 30 days or less, and don't become, you know, rentals for, you know, people who just wish to stay there for longer or, you know, three, four, five months or live there or anything like that. But how do we put in safeguards to make sure those, those remain viable short-term rentals? Yes, Charles?
I'm note that, I mean, I agree with that. My two concerns about the commercial uses. One is, you know, those short-term rentals, if I understand the layout correctly, they're going to be against this drainage area, this swale or not quite creek, which means they're backing up on some, somebody else's existing home, you know, depending on where the, the home is on the existing property. I'm just, again, there's existing residents who lived there for years, lived next to a residential suburban zone, didn't expect to have commercial in their backyard. Want to make sure that there, that there's can be some mitigation that, you know, they aren't going to have to listen to a party every night in the backyard of one of these short-term rentals. And then the hotel, which of course, from a city perspective, we'd love to see, you know, is what, four stories tall, I think, is the premise. Again, that, you know, looking, that backs up again to somebody else's property. And so they just need to make sure they look at mitigation there as to how they minimize their impact on that, whoever that existing neighbor is.
Seems like those short-term rentals, they back up the creek. And I think the other side were the two places that, and we don't need to, I'm just conceptually thinking, I think those are the two places that Jan Bealy said the owners were in favor of.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, those are, okay. So those are ones that are inside the urban services line but are not part of this project, but those people are okay with the project.
That's what Ms. Bealy had indicated, correct?
That's good to know. Because the point is, it's just, you know, okay with those uses, but want to make sure neighbors are, don't have too much adverse impact.
Sure. Any other notes, Susan, Heather?
None of this.
Oh, all right. I think when we were there, he was talking about sort of like, is it OXPO up in Napa? I think it's the, is the, is sort of that outdoor market. So kind of seeing the pictures and the possibilities there is kind of exciting. Yeah, Susan?
Yeah, I just took my notes. I did one thing there, I, you know, I like the general idea of sort of maker spaces that he's proposing. And I'd like to see some kind of professional co-working space considered as part of this because, you know, it is something that can attract us folks from the Bay Area to, who can bring their jobs with them and create more opportunity for professional, higher-paid head of household jobs.
I think it's because it's supposed to be tourist-serving and so I kind of see that more of the maker space experiential. So I would, I would want to leave that up to the applicant. I don't know if that would be a fit or not. Like generally, I'm totally in favor of that in this space. I'm not sure if that's quite the right fit, but always nice to throw out there and whatever they see fits with that mix that they're trying to make successful, I think would be good. All right, so why don't we go on to affordable housing? Phil, you'd mentioned, and we all know, you know, moderate housing, we are, are good on. What could this look like? What are the options to, and again, we don't need to get into details, but if you start focusing in on the low and the very low, do we see that as something that we can, can pursue?
Yes, sorry. Yes, that is something that we have the option of in designing a specific plan. We have flexibility to design a affordable housing program so long as it's consistent with our existing affordable housing policy. So you can choose to, you know, direct the applicant to say, look, we need housing in these following categories and in the following locations in your particular project. We can get to that specificity.
So I know the 20 unit per acre, which is where the apartments are, would seem the ideal spot and that being the minimum, the sort of that threshold that the state considers, you know, affordable in the low and very low category, but then of course you have to build it and make sure. So from a zoning perspective, that counts, but, you know, of course, we also want to see something actually gets built and is affordable for those, those income thresholds. So any, any thoughts from my colleagues?
I'd like to see us do well in the, you know, focus on what the project does in the low and very low income categories with particular attention towards the certain kinds of service jobs that might be taken on by head of household to make that, you know, fly, the jobs that they're creating within that particular site. And I would encourage them to incorporate them into the living experience of the community so that if you're walking through the community, you'd never know which ones are the designated affordable units, indeed restricted or otherwise.
I think that we need to have more affordable housing to meet our revenue numbers. I think this would be an ideal project to put in additional affordable housing.
So I, you know, on our basic formula under our affordable housing policy, it would call for five very low, 10 low, 11 moderate. And as we're all discussing, we don't need the 11 moderate. So I would just ask, you know, Phil and staff should work with the applicant to see, you know, what's realistic, what can we get in terms of additional very low or low in exchange for, for going the 11 moderates. And as Councilmember Funk mentioned, I mean, and I think in our policy, you can't just stick them all in one corner of the development. They're going to be sprinkled around. As long as the applicant understands that, I think we're good.
Phil, is that sufficient?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Traffic and access San Ramon and Del Rio. Yeah, that's probably the biggest thing. Well, that next to density, right? Those are the, those are the two biggies. Charles?
First, I had a question on that because as you said, this is the biggie. And the question is, what's Caltrans' role in approving or disapproving or just commenting on, you know, what kind of access ingress and egress? I mean, can they get down to the level of, oh, no, you can't have a left turn into this project off of Del Rio or you can't have a, you know, a center turn lane or how's, how much of a role do they play? Maybe this is a Nick DeBarre Public Works question. Because I think that's going to be critical in terms of what's viable.
Sure. A couple of different things to be aware of here. Typically, they don't, they will comment on the environmental document. That's where they'll start. So we'll do a traffic analysis, we'll do an environmental document, and they'll weigh in on that. The other part is when the project begins to affect Caltrans on-ramp, off-ramp and timing of those things, that's where the concerns get raised. Typically, the traffic analysis will address that. But if it involves doing work on the Caltrans right-of-way, that's where they have ultimate control. But if Nick's on the line, I don't know if he wants to weigh in if he's there, but I don't know. Okay.
How far off the freeway does the Caltrans right-of-way or their zone of influence or whatever go?
I believe that their right-of-way is currently extend about halfway roughly onto the tiny home lodging parcel that's on the northwest corner of the southbound intersection. Roughly. They're going to, they're going to probably be delighted that Ramona, which is on the south side, if that gets realigned as we're looking at the alternative improvements for the interchange to pull that over to the westmore and away from that southbound on-ramp. What they will do is, once we do any interchange improvements and do any of those things, not that we need a lot on the west side, obviously, it's really the alternative improvements that we've been talking about are more between the northbound interchange and the El Camino-Rial intersection of Del Rio. But they will probably get more right-of-way out of that deal, but on this west side, probably, they probably won't be taking much more. So anything outside of their right-of-way, with exception to any environmental type of documents, as Phil mentioned, is more or less our, our call.
Thank you.
Susan?
Yeah, so following up on that, is there a chance that the applicant and we could go down, you know, a fairly substantial pathway that involves a lot more investment on their part and then find out the count and then be in a position where Caltrans vetoes the ability to turn left out of the project onto Del Rio Road?
I, you know, just from the traffic sensitivity analysis that we recently did with W-Trans, looking at all four of these major undeveloped parcels, the annexed east and west Walmart site and the church property is what we call this Beryl Creek. Just where we kind of wrapped up that final analysis and it's looking like, you know, ultimately, maybe short-term, the tiny lodge, lodging hotel might be able to turn left out of there if they build first. But ultimately, you know, depending on traffic levels that come out of there, it's, it could be very likely that we would not want to have any left turnouts of that Del Rio entrance or exit that they have. But, you know, that's what this additional traffic analysis that we need them to do to really understand better about, you know, on-site, it's kind of, you know, we have the corridor that we did the traffic sensitivity analysis, but on their site, we need to kind of understand where, you know, the different uses of their site are going to be sending traffic. Is it going to be more exiting onto San Ramon or Del Rio or what it might be? We do want it to be coming, basically entering off Del Rio, but, you know, maybe there's something, I'm just going to throw it out there because it's always an option as maybe there's a traffic circle at Del Rio and San Ramon that, you know, they make a right-out of that Del Rio entrance exit and then they go through that traffic circle and they get back to the freeway. So that is, to me, I think that is probably one of the key things is, is how are they going to get traffic leaving the site back to 101 interchange?
Without sending everybody to San Ramon.
Exactly.
Right. I think, I think it's because the whole, for me, there's, there's a lot of things here that can, a lot of potential, the concerns are things that can be designed around and mitigated if the traffic flow works. And if the traffic flow doesn't work, then you're spilling out a lot of traffic up San Ramon, onto the Santa Cruz, which is a terrible little, little freeway interchange as opposed to that nice, long northbound ramp you've got on Del Rio. Plus, it's where the traffic backs up. It'll drive the neighbors nuts. And you're sending lots of traffic. If you really stay with a loop concept, then half your traffic flow is coming out onto San Ramon Boulevard in order to make it up to Del Rio and driving through the middle of the residential area rather than along that grand entrance that we heard described next to the tiny home motel. So I really, I think that having a contingency plan for a way that this thing is viable if Caltrans, if, if that left turn option is not available after the traffic studies are done, it's really key to have that attention be played to that so that we're not walking down a long, a long pathway together with this applicant and everybody's investing a lot in it and then we can't, and then it doesn't fly or the next, or the council is cornered, feels cornered in a position to, to accept something that really doesn't work well for the neighborhood because we've gone down such a long pathway. So let's pay attention, just to get it right.
It sounds to me that we are assuming right now, whether it's Phil or Nick, what I'm, what I think I heard from you is that we're not anticipating a left out of Del Rio to be very likely.
Yeah, what I heard from the applicant is that that was their plan.
No, but I'm asking Phil and Nick.
No.
Yes, right now, it is definitely a challenging proposition. If you get further away from the freeway ramp, it's easier. Or if you have something like a traffic circle, it might be easier. But as it is now, having the driveway in location is proposed and having left turns come towards freeway, because of the slope you have coming down from the interchange and because of that close distance, it's somewhat problematic. Picture yourself very similar to what we have right now at Picture yourself very similar to what we have right now at the San Anselmo, right by the In-N-Out entrance exit. That's not an ideal situation. And I think in today's traffic planning, we wouldn't normally do that. And so that's the kind of situation we're trying to avoid.
Or, or look at Traffic Wave or San Rosa during, you know, the, the state hospital when they have a shift change. You know, those get very heavy traffic. And I think one of the things is, is you were taking a left out of that, the project site, you know, to go eastbound on Del Rio. If there's cars queued up there, it could potentially be, you know, kind of a, a big congestion with cars trying to get across the road through cross-traffic and, and then being queued up there. So.
So to Susan's point, how do we prevent going too far down a road and a significant investment being made and then find, and then discovering that, oh, no, that can't be done and the roundabout or traffic circle, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. But then when we, we're, we're sensing that a bunch of traffic's going to go out onto San Ramon, which we don't want, but now we've gone down this route of a significant investment. How do we prevent that from happening?
Well, I, I think that, as Phil mentioned, you know, having some neighborhood meetings to understand what the neighborhood expectations might be for traffic. And then maybe looking at some creative solutions to, you know, if you can, if the traffic demands do not allow a left turn out onto Del Rio, you know, how, how is that going to be accommodated? Is it going to be accommodated by exiting on San Ramon and, and kind of somehow forcing traffic to the, make a left out of there and go back to Del Rio? Or is it going to be, you know, like I mentioned earlier, potentially a traffic circle at the intersection of Del Rio and San Ramon or, or something else? But we won't really know until we have that more detailed traffic analysis from the site. And, you know, I guess that, that is a risk that, you know, the applicant will need to take if they want to move this forward. But, you know, I do think there are some options, a couple of options that, that might work well to, to accommodate that if the left is not allowed out of the project site on Del Rio.
Okay. And, and Nick, I think, and Phil, I think he said their intention is like, the first step after this is public input. The second step is like, okay, here's kind of the, the design and now traffic. So it didn't seem like there was going to be a huge process before we get to traffic. So I, I think we can kind of all agree, like that's, that stuff needs to be really addressed upfront before going too far down the road.
And we, we, we've got a really good basic traffic sensitivity analysis that we did, you know, and it's those alternative improvements that are, you know, now turned up to the roundabouts at the interchanges in El Camino. And we should know from Caltrans and hopefully the next month, the reaction to that. In the meantime, we're putting together a, a plan line for the corridor. So it will not include anything that this particular project will perhaps demand, like, you know, any kind of, you know, some kind of solution to get cars, if there is not a left out of, of the project on Del Rio, how are you going to get that back? That'll, that'll be on the applicant to, to solve that puzzle.
It does seem like an area.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish, Susan.
We'll get, go ahead.
But it does seem like an area where, where a traffic circle concept could work and could be a value added for residents who currently on San Ramon, you know, who have to make that left turn onto Del Rio and when everybody's coming out of Monterey Road School and that kind, and those moments during the day.
I was going to say, I, that I think it's unavoidable that the applicant here has to assume some risk in terms of, you know, can they make this all work? In terms of our guidance, though, I, you know, I don't, I would hope that Caltrans doesn't ban left turns because I'm not, to me, the only impact of the left turn problem would be the cars would back up into the project, wouldn't back up anywhere else. But I think Nick's very creative with that traffic circle idea. The big concern here is that, you know, is probably to not allow any traffic going north on San Ramon and not allow people turning left into the project on San Ramon. Because if you, if you don't allow those two things, then people aren't going to use that northern part of San Ramon. I think you have an unavoidable impact, though, on the last two or three houses on, on San Ramon, if you're going to have a San Ramon exit, you kind of have a, and so I, the applicant needs to figure out what they can do to make, you know, life better or not so bad for those three applicants. And, and so they just need to understand what we're looking for, which is minimal impact on San Ramon, got to comply with whatever, you know, whoever rules the roost, whether it's Caltrans or what have you. And so they are going to take, take some risks, you know, paying for a traffic or analysis or study or whatever that ultimately may prove is not viable.
Phil, does that give you the direction you need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next being community outreach, I think it goes without saying, do it right now. Get to it. I think probably my biggest concern is with COVID and the sheltering at home and distancing, that will make it more challenging. Certainly, there are creative opportunities for doing outreach. And so I would really, I strongly encourage the applicant to, to go through, to, to use several means to outreach and get input, not like simply mailing a postcard or something like that, but really that connection and talking with people, whether it's one-on-one at some point or whether it's like this. But the community really needs to be in front of, see, touch to the extent they can and have that one-on-one communication with the developer, not just a, you know, mail-in survey. Charles?
Well, they have several acres, there's a lot of room for physical distancing if they have a meeting on site.
Assuming we get to the point where we can allow 50 or more people to gather.
Spread them out on several acres, it's prob, it's not a gathering. The other question, the other point would be, you know, we're saying do that quickly. If we grant the approval of moving to the next step, can we not put a time, a timeframe on that, Phil, as far as saying, you know, they, we approve this, they must have a, you know, a neighborhood meeting within, you know, 45 days? Or can we put a, a time, maximum time on that? Or should we, or do you advise against that?
I would not advise putting a time on it, but I would advise saying that before they proceed, you know, before any other steps, that they do that. Because, yeah, given the existing shelter at home and other things that are happening, you know, maybe that's an extended time period, I'm not sure. The issue is just at what stage of the project rather than how, how soon. So that's probably the critical piece. Anyway, I apologize to that earlier, my phone was about to die, so I had my secretary find me an extension cord to plug this thing in.
Good job, Mary. All right. Any, we, good with regards to community outreach? All right. So any other items or project direction that anyone, any of my colleagues have? I'm not seeing anything. Oh, did someone start to say something?
Yes, City Manager Rochelle Rickert.
Oh, I was going to say one thing, but. Oh, you, you, you go ahead, Rochelle.
Yeah, there was just one thing you guys talked around it, and I think Susan addressed it. I just want to make sure that I understand kind of the council consensus on timing of commercial versus residential.
Oh, yeah, we, we did that under general plan, specific plan. We said yes on specific plan and then whatever needed to, to be done within the, whether it was option one or two or however you, you know, staff working with the applicant decides how to design it, but that we want to make sure we're incentivizing commercial and we don't end up with residential first. So I think, Phil, did you, you heard that from us pretty clearly, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what I heard, because I mean, that's, that's a little bit different on the how you want to protect yourself long-term, but I also heard commercial development first or in tandem, and you want the maximum protection for that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
Perfect.
Um, and then I would also say, just in the future, if there's anything where we have somehow been unclear, Phil, I would say if you're understanding it one way and the applicant thinks they heard it another way, and it's something of significance, you need, let's come back to us. Let's, let's have a conversation about it. Don't, don't try to negotiate it and let that get away, but let's come back here and see, do, if we need a study session, is it a meeting on a specific topic? But let's make sure that if, if there's, if there's a lack of clarity around what council wants, let's come back to council, make sure we get it right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. And with that, I will ask Rochelle, is there anything else that you wanted to make sure that we addressed?
Nope, I think you covered it. If Phil's okay, I think I'm good.
And Phil, you good? All right. And with that, did you say something, Phil?
No, thank you, yes.
Oh, okay.
It was assuming you have to vote on authorizing.
I am just going to ask for a, for a motion.
I move that we accept, hold on, I have to pull out my list here.
Staff recommendation?
I move that we accept the staff's recommendations and move forward.
Second? All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Newsom and a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Borbeau?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
4-0 motion passes.
All right, fabulous. Hey, one item, one item on the agenda and it's only 10 to 10. Oh, boy. It does take a little bit longer doing it this way, I think, but hey, we're making it work. We had some good public engagement tonight, and I really want to thank those of you who did engage with us and called in, emailed. It's, it's working and I'm glad, I'm really glad it's working and I'm glad everyone's engaging. So, thank you. All right. We are now on to our discussion item, which is we're going to just do a, a brief discussion of the COVID-19 issues that will include oral updates from myself and the city manager. Any questions that? Yes, Heather?
Can Roberta come back?
Oh, my goodness, thank you.
Yes.
Gee Louise, I'm just like going right along. Roberta, come on back.
I'm trying.
Does somebody need to call her or?
Well, I heard her voice. She said she was trying.
Okay.
Nice of you to remember her, Heather.
Oh, it's so funny, I remembered her like 10 minutes ago and I was like, oh, and I should have just typed it into my agenda, pulled, you know, get Roberta back. Sorry, Roberta, it's past my bedtime.
Heather, I think I'm hearing audio, but I can't seem to get the visual. I think this is one that Luke may have to look into.
Okay. So as long as we know we've got you in audio, can, are you okay if we proceed?
You bet.
Okay. So we're going on to a discussion item of COVID-19 issues, hey, including oral updates by myself and the, and the city manager and any questions that council might have, and we also take public comments. So I think, I think I let you know last meeting that I am part of the elected task force that is working with the, with the county. So it's myself, Mayor Restem from Aurora Grande, supervisors Compton and Gibson, and the four of us are meeting regularly with Wade Horton, Penny Bornstein, and sort of that core group and looking at the phase, the kind of the framework that they're putting together for the phase reopening. So, you know, bottom line, what we know is that here in San Luis Obispo, we have flattened the curve because of the steps that we've taken. Some of you, I think, probably saw that myself and my six colleagues as mayors, all seven of us, signed on to a letter by Assemblyman Cunningham that we sent to the governor and really laying out our case and saying, here are all the things that we've done, here's what our community has done, here's the capacity that we've built, and we ask that as soon as possible, you look at giving us local control and taking a regional approach. He has yet to do that, but we are continuing to advocate in that way. To be clear, as we look at this framework, it's really important for the public, especially to know that it is the county health officer, Dr. Penny Bornstein, who's responsible for determining the guidelines for reopening our county. Know that this decision isn't being made in a vacuum, it is built off of state and federal guidelines and through thorough research and consideration of a panel of experts, consultation from community leaders and from the general public. So who makes the ultimate decision? Ultimately, the governor decides when he's going to lift the California state order. And so even if we lifted our own order, we would still be under the county's order. I'm sorry, we'd still be under the state's order. And it's better that we're under our own order, it gives us a little bit of flexibility. So just to go into a little bit about the, how we came about doing this framework. So basically, Dr. Bornstein tasked an independent panel of experts to develop a framework for the reopening decision-making that is rooted in data and health indicators. The panel is made up of highly regarded professionals with expertise in public health, laboratory testing, epidemiology, infectious disease law, medical research, and, and all of them coming together to develop a framework for decision-making. And the purpose of the framework is really to, again, be rooted in that state and federal guidance and include a set of data, database indicators that when we can know how to relax and tighten social distancing measures. The framework is also going to take into account local factors to ensure that our county is adequately positioned to limit risk and ensure that we have appropriate preventive measures and healthcare capacity to manage the spread of the disease. Really recognizing the broad health and societal impacts, the measures are to manage the spread of COVID-19 is really, I mean, if we look at across the world, our community, it's, it's been challenging. So Dr. Bornstein has asked the panel to road test the framework with key community leaders and sectors, right? We don't want to just have this, you know, this core group of people, but we want to get broader feedback so that we get insight and ideas and impacts. What are the unintended consequences of various measures and guidelines that will then inform Dr. Bornstein's positions? We've looked at 20 different sectors, 250 individuals reviewed the guidelines, have provided feedback and ideas, insights on the impacts and managing the spread of the disease that would have on a future opening scenario. Continued public input, even once this framework is delivered on May 1st. So at, at the press conference on May 1st, Dr. Bornstein will make that draft framework publicly available. Public content will still be taken, this is a living document, it isn't just this plan that now we implement, but something that will give some guidelines and shift and change as we get feedback and, and we see how things progress. So that is, is sort of where we are right now. We're at the, the stage of before the, the shelter at home order is lifted, this is where we are now, and there has been no final decision made on what the exact measures are and when that's going to take place. But after the shelter at home is lifted, the phases are going to resemble a public health campaign, right? In terms of reaching out to the public, we need to educate people on, okay, what does it mean to be in this phase and the next phase, or if we have to go backwards? So a lot of education is going to be needed. And that is sort of the, the framework that I wanted to share with you tonight. Rochelle, do you want to do a little bit of a report and then we can see what questions we might have or input from council, and then we can go to the public?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of what we have been working here on a staff level is a lot of what the mayor has been talking about. We did have an Atascadero Community Task Force where we invited, I think there ended up being 12 individuals in the community across a broad spectrum of perspectives, not just business perspectives, but there was certainly a heavily emphasis on that, but various ages and members of the, of the community. They did provide some very good feedback, mainly about clarity, communication, education, a lot of those things that the mayor and her town. a lot of those things that the mayor and her task force have heard that the county is taking to heart. So I think it was a great opportunity, and I appreciate the county inviting our community in to give some feedback on something that is primarily a medical document that's driven by doctors, but wanting to get that input, so I appreciate that. As far as what's going on here at the city, the city continues to be open for business, just not in person. We're doing a lot of things by phone, and most of our employees that are not out on the street, not police, fire, public work, are working from home. So feel free to call, we do that. We do have a lot of different things going on, even in recreation. We have virtual recreation programs and a lot of planning behind the scenes going on. We've been updating our website. Phil has a team that's really making sure that our business community is staying informed. So there's a lot of information on our website, in addition to pointing you to the right spot on the readyslow.org website or on the SBA website and some of that. Overall, the community continues to do very well on social distancing, obviously. You know, as the warm weather heats up and people want to get outside and just feel that spring fever in their bones, it's getting a little bit tougher, and people want to spread their wings, but we just need to continue to keep that curve flattened and work towards that phased reopening that we're all looking for. We did see a spike in cases last week. A lot of those were traced to family members that got together at Easter in violation of the order. And, you know, that was a little bit tough. I think we were somewhat expecting that that might happen. And so, you know, that's kind of a blip in the curve, but that is what happens when we all join back together a little too early. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on COVID and the city's response to it.
Thanks, Rochelle. Any questions of council members? Roberta?
Yes, I'm wondering what would be the best point of contact for business owners? Would that be Phil, or would it be the chamber? Or do they need to go down to San Luis and talk to Wade Horton and Penny Bornstein? I've had many calls from business owners that are concerned about when they will be opening, and they don't know who to talk to.
So that guidance... Oh, go ahead, Rochelle.
No, I was probably going to say the same thing you were, Mayor, go ahead.
I was just going to say the guidance will be out May 1st, and so what we're able to do locally, because we do have our own order, is we're able to start, we're able to start moving from the terminology of essential business to can you operate safely? And so you have businesses that are starting to be able to open up gradually as long as they can maintain that safe operation, and their employees who need to can continue to shelter at home or work from home. And so that information, that information is tending to come out via the press releases and the press conferences that are done, in terms of if a business wants to know if they can specifically operate. Rochelle, I've kind of gone through the county in my calls, but that's a really good question. We're going to get more of that, what would you recommend?
I, again, we're going to call the county hotline. Remember, the county is still under the state order, so the county cannot open it all up. But what they do have is they have the attorneys at the county looking very closely at that state order to see where can we push that open as long as people can operate safely? And so their best bet, if they're wondering if they're allowed to open up now, is to call the county. If they're wondering when they're going to open up, that is going to be a function of the governor for a lot, and then the health official and those very medical criteria that deal with capacity, case, number of cases, there's a whole list of things. And so, but we can't do anything here at a local level until the governor says lifts the state order. So we're still under that state order, we can be more restrictive, but not. So they're really trying to push that envelope, so we don't have an answer on when.
So if you see, if there is a business that is saying, hey, I think I can operate safely, you have them call the county hotline and lay out their plan, and the county will let them know, you know, yea or nay, if they can move forward with something like that. Does that help, Roberta?
Just to finish it up, it does and it doesn't. You know, I have a call from a local florist, and she says she gets 40% of her business from Valentine's Day and 40% of her business from Mother's Day, which is coming up soon. And she would like to advertise in advance that they can come in and make their orders and pick up their flowers, and doesn't know whether she's able to do that and whether it would be prudent to spend some money on that so she can hopefully make it through the year and her business will thrive. And that's where the rubber hits the road. There's really no answer, and I understand the governor has, holds the purse strings, but I feel like we need to be advocating for businesses like that to give her as much help as we can.
And so I've talked to a similar business, and she's not bringing people in, but she can have, she's got, you know, basically barriers between where, you know, flowers are coming in and, you know, pickups, so there's no delivery and contact with those folks. Plenty of space if she has an employee where they can social distance, they're not having people come in, that can operate. She, like, call the county, yes, we can do that. So I think on these case-by-case basis, if someone's wondering, can I do this? If you're wanting people to come in and give orders, that's probably a no-go. Can people do it online? Can you service that? I think there are creative ways to go about that, but I think, again, you've just, they've got to call that county hotline and find out, get creative and find out what they can do and operate safely.
Thank you.
And we are happy, Roberta, to kind of tell them what some other businesses are doing as far as curbside pickup and some of that. They are considered a retail outlet as long as they do curbside pickup, no person-to-person contact. There is some flexibility, and the county is willing to work with them.
Yeah. Susan?
The development of those guidelines, is attention being paid to the air handling and issues in the physical environment, and how many people are breathing into the same air over periods of time? And this is a respiratory virus, and I see in, you know, in the general comments of the public, lots of concern about, what are you getting on your hands? And we need to wash those, but we also have to be attentive about what we're breathing in and out, you know, to each other and from each other.
Right, and so the guidelines, again, are based on epidemiology, medical science, that's what's driving the decisions. And so the phases, when that's revealed come Friday, you'll see what those phases look like. And when you go to the federal and the state guidelines, they show some similar phasing. Like in the beginning, how many individuals can group together? And then what does that look like, you know, if we pass that phase, what does that look like in the next phase? So yes, that is being addressed.
Yeah, because a barber shop with high ceilings and rapid exchanges of air and good filtering might be able to handle well-spaced crowds that a smaller place with, or a place with with less air handling capability might really not be safe to operate, even though the physical spacing might be the same, even though the surface standards might be the same. And so I just hope that that's being considered, so the businesses know what's safe for them and their employees as they try to make the decision about when to open.
And I don't know that they're getting into ceiling height and that type of thing. I think you're looking, you're going to be looking a little more square footage. Can you maintain a physical distancing? So those are the kind of things that will be seen out of that.
The more specific, the better.
Yes. Heather?
Back to Roberta's question, you know, having a florist not being able to take walk-in orders? The restaurants are currently allowed to do that, so some of the restaurants are allowing people to come in, place orders, then wait outside or come back, that sort of thing. As we start to operate and try to get our economy back going, there are some things that are happening in an allowed industry because it's food-based, but the same type of contact would happen in a retail or professional having a meeting. So will we get a detail of what operating safely means? Does that mean having a hand washing station? Does it apply to retail, professional services? I have a lot of business owners that were professional services, as well as retail, that have shut down and don't know how to operate, just even in the current shelter-at-home. I've had them contact the city. There's so much that people are doing outside the scope of shelter-at-home and operating an essential business, how do we all get on the same page? Because I think some of our business owners are being treated differently than others.
And you're right of that because of the essential versus non-essential designation. And so because we're still under the governor's order, there's only so much we can do. As Rochelle said, we're trying to see where are those little openings that we have, but that's why you've been able to go in and order at a restaurant, because they've been considered an essential business. But like I said, we want to be getting away from that, and as we develop this framework and we're able to get into the next phase, we want to talk operating safely and get away from that essential, non-essential dichotomy. So yes, the input that we had, that part of the reason for going out to the stakeholder groups was to say, what do you need? As Rochelle said, I mean, we got a lot of great input in terms of, you know, guidelines and consistency and knowing what to do and having the resources available to do that. So that's something that is being worked on, so that businesses across the board, and sometimes it'll be industry-specific. But, you know, perhaps what we would love to see is where, hey, here's what you put on your, here's what you put on your door. If you're a, you know, a retail serving or people are coming to your business, here's what you put in your door to inform people. Maybe here's something at the cash register, here's how you implement this with your customers. We want to be able to have a consistency of message and availability of that for people to inform their customers and their employees. So yes, that is being worked on right now.
I can tell you, having a business of my own, putting a sign on the door means nothing. My clients don't respect what's written on there unless you lock a door. What happens is, is people want to go back to life as normal as soon as possible. The more restrictions we have or the longer we stay underneath this, a lot more businesses feel that their livelihood doesn't matter. And so what's happening is, is we are allowing these businesses to fail because we haven't either advocated for them or we haven't been able to give them a way to go back to their livelihood. Some people are single, entire families, like some of our restaurants here in town, their entire family works there, so their livelihood, their restaurant, they were essential. I think all of our businesses are essential, and I think the sooner we get back to allowing everybody to operate with as much resources as possible, the better it's going to be. Otherwise, business owners are just going to start doing business without worrying about those safety precautions.
Yeah, and so here's the, I mean, here's the trouble with that. When we have, if we have people that do that and operate without the safety precautions, and they're doing that en masse, and we start to see a spike, then we start to close things back up. And in my opinion, that is worse than not having reopened to begin with. You open up and then you've got to close back down again, not good. So there are parameters in place that, hey, if you, if suddenly, you know, whether it's capacity, it's health, it's these different, these different criteria, we start to hit these, we've got to go backwards. We can't afford to go backwards. So this is going to be a massive, I mean, it was easy to shut down, not, I don't mean easy for people to do that, I mean, the physical ability to just shut down, boom, that was, that was fairly simple. A significant impact, definitely, but reopening, that is going to be a completely different animal, and it is going to take a lot of education. You're going to have, you're going to have the spectrum, you're going to have the people that say, I don't care, we shouldn't have done this anyway, and I'm just going to go do what I want to do. You're going to have the other group that says, you shouldn't open up unless everyone can be tested, and we know that everybody is safe, and you should keep everything closed until that's the case. And so you've got those two ends of the spectrum, and then you've got the rest of people in between who are the ones that we really need to talk to and help them to know how to operate safely and how to stay safe so we can keep moving through the phases and not have to go backward.
Well, I appreciate everything that you've done, that everyone has pulled together to do on these task forces. I listened to Gavin Newsom's press conference today saying that he's going to start respecting communities that are able to implement the proper phases and the proper procedures to go to the next step. I just want to make sure that everybody is having a voice in this. I think Gavin Newsom said there's a site for them to give input there. I think the public should come out and give input, too. And then for those that don't read a sign, a little bit more education's going to happen on our business owner's side to really make sure that we don't go back to where we were. People lost their entire life savings and livelihoods in a matter of one month. I'd hate to see that happen to a bunch more businesses if we don't do something about it. So, thank you.
Sure. And I think we're also going to have some businesses that don't reopen right away. They may continue to do orders from home and things like that because maybe they're part of the out-of-population or they're living with someone who is. And so I think it is important for all of us to realize that everyone's going to act and come out of this a little bit differently, and we need to have compassion for one another because we're each coming from a different place in this. Charles?
Well, I think you all had great comments and concerns. Kind of back to where Councilmember Fonzie started this, my concern was, you know, where do people, where should people provide input? Obviously, the city doesn't have much control over this, but we want to point our folks in the right direction. We want to advocate for them. And Roberta mentions, like, specific business examples, but I'm thinking about, you know, other folks who just, you know, they have an opinion, they want their voice to be heard. And clearly, we in the city don't have a lot of latitude on this, but we can advocate for people. Where's the best place to point them? And Rochelle mentioned the county hotline for businesses in particular. And I, you know, I think you've done some good, really good work on this task force. I like the letter that you signed on to, you know, although in theory, you know, what if, you know, if we didn't like the letter you signed on to, or if a council member...
We're going to actually come back to that question in just a moment, so, yeah.
Yeah, you want to address what the best avenues are for people to express their opinion.
Right, so let me answer that question. When the, for, when the framework is put out on Friday, it will be online, and then there will be a space for the public to provide input. And that input will be looked at and filtered through, like, are there questions that need to be answered? Are there some ideas that need to be taken into consideration? So yes, all of that will be looked at when that's up on Friday, there will be a space on the website.
And I'm glad, you know, I think the county's trying to be somewhat proactive on this, you know, because we got to get to that point where the question is, can you do this safely? Not whether this is a life-authoring, you know, business service, but can it be done safely? And hopefully, the governor will, you know, enable, empower counties that are doing okay to, you know, make those decisions on their own, because we've got to let people go back and do things. Although, you know, the people, I don't understand people who, you know, don't want to go, well, I don't want to wear a mask, that's a minor inconvenience to doing business. And people should cooperate in that in order to help out businesses, so, you know, we don't fall back. But I want to see, you know, every business that possible, you know, open up, be able to open up and just practice good, you know, good, safe practice.
I think businesses could have, like, masks that have their own logo on them, and you don't have your own mask, oh, here, it'll be $15, it's yours to keep. It's like a great, and then they're wearing it around with their logo on it. Roberta?
Yes, thank you for all the kind comments. I think you're doing a good job in representing the city well, Heather. I think what people are looking for is a ray of hope, that everybody is tired of being in their home and tired of staying home from work, and they're looking for somebody to reach out a hand to help them do that. So I'm hoping that this thing that comes out from the county on Friday will have that measure in there that says, you are a florist, call here, we'll tell you how to put in fans or wear gloves or change whatever it... or wear gloves or change whatever it may be. But they need some point of contact or someplace to call besides, oh, you can open it up. People need a little bit of handholding and they need to see that, yes, I'm going to be able to open up my business, I'm going to be able to make it. We need the hope.
Yep. No, you're absolutely right about that, Roberta. I think it still will be the county hotline, but people, I do want the public to know they can call me. I've had several calls directly from people, whether it's about the florists that I got a call from, whether it's somebody who's moving and can I do that? I've gotten a lot of phone calls, I'm happy to get those and help triage. The, what I really, a couple of things I want to say. One, Congressman Carbajal and Assemblyman Cunningham have been incredibly supportive of our area when we're having our regular calls. They are both a part of that. And if they can support in any way, in their function, they're doing that, so I'm so appreciative of that. When I look at what county staff has had to do in the last 45 days, let alone trying to pull this together in the last two weeks, this is a Herculean effort. And so while it would be lovely to say, like, here's this and this and this and this, we want to give that ray of hope, but it looks very scrappy. And hey, call this number and we're going to do what we can. We're here to help you, we're here to make sure you get questions answered. And it's a very scrappy team, that's all I can say right now. I really appreciate, Dr. Bornstein, this is not her first rodeo. She's been around for, whether it's SARS, Ebola, anthrax, H1N1. We're really lucky to have her in this county. And Wade is doing a tremendous job. So, and the whole team with them, so very grateful for that. So Mayor Pretem Borbeau did bring up the signing of the ordinance. Oh, yes.
I apologize, just City Manager. If businesses just want to advocate reopening sooner or a wider reopening or some of those things, not necessarily comments to the county hotline, I think your best bet is to write the governor's office because that is the biggest controlling factor right now, is that state order. We cannot, the county cannot do something in violation of that state order or more liberal than that state order. So if there are people that want to advocate for opening up sooner or closing, that is in the governor's hands right now.
And so Mayor Pretem Borbeau had referenced my signing of that letter, and so I did want to bring that up. We've had, I just want to be able to sort of clarify and maybe formalize the current practice that we've been using, sort of interpretation of, you know, the mayor signing letters. It's been in our council norms. We've talked about it, if it's something like, say, a local control issue or fiscal stewardship that we all agree as part of our, whether it's in our strategic plan or, you know, here's what we all agreed to. Because sometimes things are needed to be done quickly, and that's going to be coming up more now. We have weekly calls, the mayor's due with Dave Mullenax from the League of California Cities advocating on behalf of, you know, Atascadero and our whole region. So we wanted to propose some wording for next time, but to have you take a look at that we could add to our council norms. Rochelle, do you have that to bring up on the screen? Rochelle, are you muted?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, worries.
Luke, if you could, if you could help me bring that up on the screen, that would be helpful. Good. Okay, I can't see what you see, so are you seeing a Word document?
No.
No. Okay, let me try.
There it is.
There we go. Okay. So this was the wording, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll read it just for the benefit of the public because nobody is able to, I mean, probably people that can see it on TV maybe, but it would say, "The mayor will at times receive written communications from recognized organizations or entities whose fundamental purpose is to support cities, such as the League of California Cities, et cetera. Those communications may be seeking city support for a position the specific organization is taking. Because of the often short time limits for submitting responses to those communications, the mayor is authorized at no cost to the city to submit the requested communication consistent with the subject entity's recommendation. At the discretion of the mayor, other written communications supporting previously agreed-upon policy issues by the council may be sent. A copy of that letter will be provided to the council at the same time it is transmitted to the addressee. Any member of the council can request an agenda item be placed on an upcoming agenda to discuss that communication. The council can also determine whether to admonish the mayor for not carrying out the intent of this provision." And so my purpose in the signing the letter with Assemblyman Cunningham, it was a very short turnaround. He wanted to be able to propose it that Monday, and so all seven of us did sign it over the weekend. And if you heard the governor's press conference that Monday, he was asked about it by a LA Times reporter, the very last question. So that was nice. I think that really started getting it on the radar, and we've gotten a lot of press from that, which I think could be helpful in the end. So that being, to me, being a very, a local control issue, which I know we've all advocated for. Heather?
I have a site to provide input. We talked about providing it to the governor. It's called, website's covid19.ca.gov. It's called Provide Input: California Recovery Roadmap. It's a survey. Let people start giving input that's going to matter here locally as well as statewide.
So Charles, you've got the most concerned look on your face. You're muted.
I'm just squinting to read the small print.
Oh.
Like concern, it's more, you know, just trying to read it.
Here we go, let's increase the percent.
Thank you.
Charles, you can change your Zoom to see it bigger.
The thing is, I got you guys, your picture's at the top, and so I can't really, I don't know how to make that thing bigger without disappearing all of you. Okay, so when you talk about recognized organizations, you mentioned the League of Cities specifically. Can you give me any other examples? Or in this case, you're talking about, I mean, the county generally, their primary purpose isn't to support cities, as we know from time to time, but who else are you talking about?
Yeah, or, I mean, it says organization, we could say, I mean, Jordan Cunningham isn't an organization, you know, as our assembly member, but I, so we could say a specific organization or individual sounds weird, but entity or something like that.
Understand, okay.
Susan?
In the spirit of the comments that you have given in this, I think it's helpful, would be helpful in this language to not just simply say, the mayor is authorized to submit responses to these communications. So, you know, as the entity requests. But the intent, I think, here should be that those, that the mayor should do that when the mayor has confidence that there is council precedent or support, or it's consistent with the plans and goals of the council. I have great confidence that our current mayor would not go off the deep end. But, you know-
Thank you. Yeah, and I think, so does this part down here help to satisfy where it says, at the discretion of the mayor, well, that says other written communications. Maybe we would say, just, I guess, now that I think about it, other written communications would, probably the one for Assemblyman Cunningham would fall under that, supporting previously agreed-upon policies. So the other one, organizations seeking city support for a specific position. Yeah, I think maybe to add something that is in alignment with, you know, council, kind of agreed-upon policies and, you know, that the council's previously agreed upon.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Roberta.
Yeah, I have a little bit of a concern with this. I'd like to get some wording in the very beginning of this about there being a short turnaround, which is the reason you're doing it without getting council approval. And I know you have it somewhere in the middle because of all the often short time limits, but that needs to be moved up to the top so it's crystal clear that we've had some abuse, and this is an institutional memory of mine, where a mayor had contacted a developer and said, we want, we like your development and it'll be fine. And that's the kind of thing we really don't want to have. So I want to have something a little more structured. And Rochelle would remember who I'm talking about, it had to do with solar panels, if they put them on, it'd be okay. So we just need to be sure.
So what you're saying is you would say upfront, maybe, so Rochelle, I don't know, I don't know that we want to sausage this right here, or if you can kind of take some notes, get it written up and then bring that back next time? Or is Brian going to tell us we have it exactly?
We haven't heard much from Brian tonight.
I think for me, one of the issues, oh, go ahead, Brian.
I'm sorry, I'm still here if you have a question.
Okay.
Let me ask, one of my, I guess, concerns in this just institutionally, I mean, I have confidence in you, you know, your ability to do this, but we're writing this as a council policy, and I know this has happened on the Board of Supervisors where the chair has signed some, signed a letter, you know, only to be chastised at the next meeting because the chair implied that this was the, you know, this was the county's position, this was the Board of Supervisors' position. And so part of it's the wording as to whether or not, you know, this is, you know, the mayor representing the whole council and the whole council agrees explicitly, agrees with all this? Or is it just written in such a way, like this last letter that was signed by seven mayors, and I don't know, was all five soups or what have you? Even, because even if I had disagreed with that letter, which I thought was a really good letter, it wouldn't have bothered me because you didn't say, I'm speaking for the whole city of, council of Atascadero. And so I think that's an important piece. If it's a rush and, you know, you got to do it, this allows that, hey, at the next meeting, we could always go, hey, mayor, that was not what all five of us wanted to say.
Right. And so I think to Roberta's issue of institutional knowledge or experience, what if, because this is in the council norms, and every time you have a new council, we review the norms. And so it could be at that point where you decide, you know, do we keep this in or not? You know, is a potential. Brian, could you weigh in? If I am signing something as mayor, is the implication in signing it that I'm signing on behalf of the entire council? Or would I have to say that I am? Or if I'm only signing as mayor, would I have to specifically say, by the way, I'm only signing as mayor?
If this were an item on the agenda and the council were to vote on it, then you could sign it on behalf of the council. However, if you want to write the letter as mayor, you should clarify that you're writing it, you know, as the mayor and clarify that it's your position as the mayor rather than the position of the city council.
So if we have a policy like this in our norms, and then I get a request from the League of California Cities with a quick turnaround, hey, we need you to sign this and, you know, get this out the door, I'm signing that as mayor, but I'm not, I'm not, I mean, never in a letter do I say, I am signing this specifically as mayor, my other council members are not party to this. Like, I don't have that sort of disclaimer. But I certainly sign as mayor, I don't speak for them.
That's right. So you can say that you're signing it as the mayor, you just don't want to say that you're signing it on behalf of the city council. Because the council, for the council to make a decision, it has to be something that's on the agenda. So when you have a quick turnaround, yes, you can sign it as mayor.
Okay, as mayor, but not on behalf of council.
Yeah. To me, that means you don't have to have a disclaimer, just don't say you're doing it on behalf of the whole council.
Right. Right, yeah, which I never do.
And that's correct. That's what Charles just said as well.
Okay.
Brian?
So it sounds like you're all good with this, but would like the wording changed around a little bit to clarify? Or, Roberta, like you're maybe wanting the short time limits moved up front rather than the, it's in the third sentence, you want it up top more? Or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so maybe, Rochelle, we would start it out just saying, because of the often short time limits for so many responses for requested communications, I don't know. Do you have a sense of moving that up front and bringing that back to us next time? You're muted.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you. And then the thing that Susan wanted to make sure is that not just other communications, but the submitted responses for, you know, requests made from organizations to make sure that that's also in alignment with previously agreed-upon policy issues by the council.
I have that in my notes also.
Okay.
And that's because there is, is an implied endorsement of the city in the mayor's position in that.
Sure.
It's different than if Councilwoman Heather Moreno wrote for that. It's not an implied endorsement of the city.
Completely underspan.
So that, you know, that's that. And the mayor would, of course, be free to sign communications with a disclaimer irrespective of whether the rest of us agree.
Sure.
May I just ask for a clarification? So there are some things that you officially adopt a policy in the action plan. Hey, advocate for fiscal sustainability or advocate for economic development tools or some of those, which are official policies. And there's other things that are continually espoused as part of you, but we don't necessarily adopt. Would those be allowed? Some of the local control things, things along those lines? So we want wording that's a little bit flexible on that, okay, if we all have been saying this, or this was just an last-approved project, that we would allow the mayor to endorse those?
Yeah, I feel comfortable with that. I think that's the purpose of having the last thing, that the mayor should use her or his wisdom and discretion in making that choice. And then the council can, you know, come back and do a hand slap if, you know, that got out of hand. So that's the purpose of having that admonishment after the fact thing, is just to be able to have the discussion if the mayor's interpretation. And then we have to trust the mayor to have the good sense to be listening to the council and taking that into account. I mean, commercial first before residential in a mixed-use horizontal.
I can sign that letter.
And it doesn't matter whether it's an official policy or not, it's like you hold it loud and clear.
I think the point being that whether you use these words or not, if you could say to yourself, in keeping with previously expressed council policy or consistently expressed, you know, council positions on this issue, if you could say to yourself, I could use those kind of words or sentences in this, then, yeah, I mean, you should, you know, feel free.
Okay. Roberta, are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable with it. I feel very comfortable with you making these decisions. However, I can see some problems down the road if we have a split council, three to two, let's say, and two hate it and three love it, and you say you're among those who love it, and say a majority of the council members support. So it's not without its dangers. And I think you understand that the mayor is carrying out the intent as best as you can. So be careful.
Yes, absolutely. Heather, any?
I think a review at strategic planning or, you know, our annual meetings, just to review, as Roberta said, as council changes or different things, dynamics, I think that's something that everybody should have this conversation with one another as they work hand in hand year after year.
Yep. Susan?
And I just, I also really appreciate the attention to distributing a copy of letter to all of us at the time that it is signed, so that we're aware of what's being spoken on our behalf. That's a very helpful process point. Thank you.
Absolutely. Sure thing. Well, thank you all, I appreciate your, um, your faith and confidence in me. Um, Rochelle, do you have everything you need to make those changes and bring that back next time?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And so now, uh, as we do have a, on our agenda, public comment, I will open up if we have any public comment on this item, so I'll ask Luke if we have any callers.
It's possible that Jeff Osland would like to speak, I'm going to bring him.
Okay.
He's getting screened, he's getting screened right now, so let's.
Okay.
Give him half a second.
And if there's anyone else, uh, waiting out there, the phone number again is 805-238-538, sorry, 805-538-2888, 805-538-2888.
Jeff does not want to comment, so no callers.
Okay. Uh, and Rochelle, have we received any comments by email to be read into the record?
Yes, we did. Uh, we have one comment to be read into the record. Um, this is from Eric Greening. Uh, so Eric states, "Mr. Greening, thanks Mayor Moreno for signing the letter to the governor from all the county's mayors, two supervisors, and Assemblyman Cunningham, and notes that the signers represent a range of political philosophies united in seeking the state's support for our county to cautiously and prudently begin to reopen our county's economic and social life. He initially supported shelter at home on the assumption that its intent was to protect our hospitals from surges and that it was to be lifted upon accomplishing that purpose, which has in this county been accomplished. Now it seems the governor has moved the goalposts and inserted other goals that can require more time to attain while shelter at home cumulatively poses ever increasing health and safety threats of its own, as well as, as well its ever more grave economic fallout. Covid-19 is so new, even the experts are on a learning curve, but he references a new study from data gathered in China when pandemic was at its peak there that demonstrates that outdoor transmission is extremely rare. On that basis, he suggests that the first stages of reopening might focus on jobs and businesses that can function outside and that even if masks needed to be required indoors, they should not be required outdoors due to the health giving effects of deep breathing, outdoor exercise. He is reluctant to reopen indoor crowded attractors such as theaters too soon and suggests that long deferred socializing be allowed in homes and outdoor areas open to the public, but only among people who know each other rather than crowds of strangers, to allow precise contact tracing in the event of an asymptomatic person unknowingly, uh, learning of having exposed people. Some people are afraid and feel vulnerable and should be supported in remaining home and rejecting visitors, but this regime should not be imposed upon everyone as long as our hospitals have the capacity to handle Covid-19 in addition to their other business." And that was from Eric Greening.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There is none.
Yep, all right. And any, any callers, Luke?
There are not.
All right, well, go ahead and close public comment and we will move on to council announcements and committee reports. Um, and you know what, I will go ahead and wave mine tonight, nothing critical to talk about, so I'll just kind of go from my left to my right on my screen if, uh, there's anything you need to report, uh, Councilmember Newsom.
Um, we have a design review committee meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock to go over a multi-unit, um, uh, design build at, um, I think it's 7298 Sunny Isabel, and that's all I have.
Mayor Pretem Borbeau?
Um, I have nothing that can't wait till next time.
All right. Councilmember Fonzie?
No report tonight.
Councilmember Funk?
The May meeting of the Homeless Services Oversight Council will occur on May 6th, which is a different, a day of the, week of the month than it usually does in order to accomplish some grant to application approval.
Right. Oh, I did forget to mention, um, I am going to be participating in the county press conference tomorrow, so I'll be the, the first up speaker, so I'm really glad that they're, you're really incorporating North County into this, so yay. And with that, um, do we have any individual determinations or actions? No, Rochelle, anything?
No report.
All right, we have our meeting adjourned. All right. Thank you, Luke, great job. Thank you, staff, for being here, appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Bye, everybody.
Goodnight.
Bye.